Okay, the live stream has started.
Great. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the first virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Despite the familiar surroundings you see behind me, this will not be our typical meeting format. Pursuant to an ordinance adopted by the city council in response to the COVID-19 public health emergency, I, as chairman of the zoning board of appeals, issued emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings and provisions for remote public participation, which are posted to the board's website. I encourage everyone who frequently appears before the board to familiarize yourselves with these emergency rules, as we do not know how long the COVID-19 public health emergency will last. In line with the emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via live streaming, and it is also being recorded. We have established these virtual hearings in keeping with the mayor and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety, but there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during our hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. And in addition, everyone wishing to testify at today's hearing, whether on behalf of an applicant or in opposition, was required to register before today's meeting. We have received both written statements and requests to testify for several matters on today's agenda, and the written statements have been shared with board members. However, please note that the only written statements and requests for public testimony that the board has received were for applications that are being continued today, either at the request of applicants or at the board's own motion. However, the board will keep those public testimony request forms on file, so that when those applications are heard, board staff can contact those who indicated a wish to testify with instructions on how. Since this is our first virtual meeting, I will go over a few things for those who will be participating in the meeting. Number one, we are operating under the emergency rules, so for all applicants and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by our cutoff date and time, you will not be able to reference them during the course of this hearing. Two, all participants will be listed as attendees within this Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer you to a panelist. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Once you are set up as a panelist, you will present your case. Our board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everybody, as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen during the meeting. Please be mindful of background noise, and please mute yourself when you are not speaking. In addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record, so it is important, more important even than usual, that two people not speak at the same time. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. This will cause audio interference, so I will repeat that one more time. If you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not be watching the live stream in tandem. Seven, please make sure you identify yourself whenever you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Eight, I'd like to remind everybody that this is the postponed March 20th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting. So everything we will be hearing today was originally scheduled for March 20th, 2020. There have been no changes to the items on the agenda between then and now. The only thing that we will be doing differently is that due to the virtual format, we will be hearing matters out of regular order and grouping them by attorney. We will hear pro se matters in a group together near the beginning of the day. We will make sure to call out the item numbers before we hear the item, but please do keep this in mind. And for those of you who follow our votes at the conclusion of the meeting, we will also be voting on those applications in the same order that we are hearing them today, as opposed to the order that's listed on the posted agenda. Number nine, if an applicant has any technical issues presenting their case and is unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue their matter until the end of the call to create a little bit of time to resolve technical issues. If that is unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Lastly, I would like to thank the many people from the board's internal staff, members of the city's departments of planning and law, the mayor and her office, and the city council, who put in significant time and effort to make this format possible and to continue the board's operations during this public health emergency. If despite the significant planning that went into today's virtual meeting, our effort is ultimately successful and any portion of this meeting has to be postponed, I hope everyone appreciates their contributions, remembers their dedication, and is collectively firm in the conviction that whatever went wrong was definitely 100% their fault. Now, I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Garcia?
Present.
Commissioner Saul?
Present.
Commissioner Esposito?
Present.
Commissioner Toya?
Present.
I am present. Quorum is established. The minutes of our February 21st, 2020, regular meeting and our March 6th, 2020, special meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the February 21st and March 6th meetings as distributed. Commissioner Toya, seconds by visual assent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. I move that we approve today's agenda. Note that this agenda, again, is our March 20th, 2020 agenda, because this is the postponed March meeting. Commissioner Toya, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The motion is approved. I'm going to skip my regular general announcements and trust that the attorneys who frequently represent applicants before the board have internalized all the revisions we made last year to our rules and to what we expect of our findings. Next, I'd like to note for the record that pursuant to the emergency rules, applicant for board calendar numbers 7820Z and 7920Z on our 2:00 PM call has requested postponed the hearing for that matter until such time as these emergency rules have been repealed, and the board can resume in person. So for anybody watching the live stream for that 2:00 o'clock call for 7820Z and 7920Z, those items will not be heard today and will not be given a continuance date at this time. I'd also like to note for the record that pursuant to the emergency rules, I have automatically continued board calendar numbers 15220S and 15320S, again on our 2:00 PM call, until such time that the board can either resume in-person meetings or I feel that the virtual hearing format is sufficient enough to accommodate everyone who wishes to speak on those items. So again, if anyone is here on the live stream for the 2:00 PM call for matters 15220S and 15320S, those two items will not be heard today and will not be given a continuance date at this time. Next, I'm going to continue with the continuances for today's morning call. Again, going out of order, calendar number 12120A for 2737 and 2767 North Cicero Avenue is going to be continued on my motion until June 19th. 12120A, again, June 19th. No further notice will be given. Board calendar numbers 13320Z, 13420Z, and 13620Z for 3542 North Southport Avenue and for 3149 Sawyer Avenue are going to be continued on the board's motion until June 5th. We are going to be hosting a special meeting on June 5th for new items and for those three calendar numbers. And in addition, calendar numbers 14420Z and 14520Z at 1443 West Somerdale Avenue are going to be continued by applicant request to June 19th. Again, 144 and 14520Z will be continued until June 19th. No further notice will be given for either of those matters. Lastly-
Chairman? One point, Chairman? 144 and 145 was an automatic request for a continuing-
And the applicant did not object?
Correct.
So again, both of those are continued until June 19th with no further notice. Lastly, 15120S at 7401 to 45 Southeast End Avenue has been withdrawn by the applicant. Again, 15120S has been withdrawn by the applicant. We will begin with our first call, our first item for today. The morning's call is 11219S at 6020 South Archer Avenue. So tech team, if we can go ahead and transfer them over to panelists, and Jeanette, if you can go ahead and start your screen share. Okay, Mr. Estrada?
Yes.
Why don't you go ahead and talk us through your request?
Oh, I was trying to- I was seeking an extension because I need more time to finish my remodel. I've been kind of delayed for architect and contractors, permits, and inspectors. We passed rough inspection. I need to do final inspections now. I should be ready to open up by the summer.
For your barber shop, you had a special use previously approved, and you're attempting to extend it.
Yes.
Are you still, is your timeline still for sometime this summer?
Yes, yeah. Actually, with this COVID, what it did is I got laid off at work, so I was able to catch up on, like, I mean, I'm pretty much, I need to do my final inspections now and HVAC. So I need to pull HVAC permits with this extension, and then I can pull them, and then I can open up my summer. I mean, I'm trying to open up a business in the pandemic, you know?
Also, will you raise your right hand? I need to swear you in. You swear to tell the truth in these proceedings? Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Estrada. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Our next item will be 14720S at 3133 to 43 North Sheffield Avenue. And while we are getting set, I will read the department's recommendation. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the reduction in the amount of required onsite parking from 86 spaces to 29 spaces to convert the existing five-story building to an 86 dwelling unit building, provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant Fletcher Lofts LLC, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated August 17th, 2019, prepared by Jeff and Associates LLC." Counselor, when you're ready, go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is our very in council for the applicant, Fletcher Lofts LLC.
And by the way, let me, so we're also going to do 14820Z. It's its companion application while we're at it. And then, Counselor, I just need to swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Go ahead.
I think you, so this morning, as you said, we're here to hear the variation in special use of this property. The special use is to reduce the parking from 86 spaces to 29. There's a little bit of nuance to that, but we'll explain it as we move forward. And the variation is to permit more MLA than what would be required under the given lot area. I have here with me our appraiser for the special use, Peter Pulos. The representative from the applicant, Bob Purcell, who was an employee of the applicant entity, and our architect Jorge Fajardo, who should be all signed in. Although Bob Purcell did not submit an affidavit, Kirby Kaiser should also be with him. He did submit an affidavit. He's also an employee of the applicant. And we explained all of the standards for, explained how the requests meet the standards for special use and variation in the affidavits that we submitted with our findings of fact. So if those folks can confirm they're online, I believe they are. I'll just go ahead and ask them if their testimony would be consistent with the affidavits that we submitted. Gentlemen?
This is Kirby Kaiser. Mine would be, I'm here, you can see me, but yeah, I can-
Mr. Kaiser, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Go ahead.
Mr. Kaiser, if you were to continue testifying this morning, would your testimony be consistent with the information that we provided in our affidavit?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And Mr. Fajardo, are you online?
Yes, I am.
Awesome.
Mr. Fajardo, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
And can you please confirm for the board that you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
And that you were the project architect for this?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. And if you were to continue testifying this morning, your testimony would be consistent with the information provided in that affidavit we submitted on your behalf?
Absolutely.
Excellent. And Mr. Pulos, are you online as well?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Mr. Pulos, you were the appraiser for this matter, for the special use?
That's correct.
And you investigated the site for, to determine whether the site was, met the standards for special use for reduction in parking under the Transit Serve Location Ordinance? And if you were to continue testifying this morning, your testimony would be consistent with the report and affidavit that we submitted together with our findings of fact in this application?
Yes, that's correct.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I know this is a little bit of a confusing case. I am happy to go through with my witnesses the progression of events that took place in this development. It's been a long road a little bit, but maybe more efficient to allow the board to ask questions if there are any. If not, then I'm happy to go through the progression.
Yeah, I would like you just to walk us through this one.
Certainly.
By the way, we also recognize Mr. Pulos in terms of your expertise.
Thank you.
So this project began in 2013. The development was rezoned in order to permit the 80 residential units that currently exist there today. The ground floor was planned for commercial use. The development was completed in early 2015, I believe. In the interim, there was commed, required that some utility infrastructure be located on the ground floor and basement levels where parking was initially planned. That took up significant space and required some of the initially planned parking to be taken off-site. A special use was approved in order to take 11 parking spaces off-site to serve this building, and because the commed infrastructure eliminated some of the available space on the ground floor and basement levels, and it also compromised significantly the leaseability of that ground floor space by creating a large obstruction in the middle of the ground floor space. Initially, this commercial space was planned for a large, either a large retail user, ideally a large restaurant or bar user, and the market for those uses was very active at the time. As the entitlements progressed and the utility complications progressed, that market slowed down a little bit, and leasing the space became very, very difficult for the applicant. They then, you know, decided, you know, we're not going to be able to get a restaurant user. This is going to command a much smaller rent. They changed, they pivoted their strategy thereafter. Leased up all of the residential uses, the residential units are leased, and the tenants are happy, but the commercial space was just not getting leased. So eventually, they decided to rezone the property in order to permit additional ground floor residential uses. Although ground floor uses are permitted in the district where the initial rezoning took the building, the increase in the number of units required a type one. And then, in order to not have to reconfigure all of the units for the MLA to fit in with the standards in this district, we are here for the variation. So this will simply allow the unit mix, the unit count is permitted in the zoning district as it. And then, so we decided, you know, since we're coming to the ZBA, we should also ask for the reduction in parking since, since the buildings residential uses have been leased up, even the onsite parking has been underutilized. I believe there are 19 spaces currently leased in the building of the 80 units. So even if all six of the new residential tenants, you know, should they be permitted to build the residential units on the ground floor, even if all six of those folks lease parking space, there will be excess parking onsite. So we want to eliminate that offsite parking because the building just doesn't need it. So that is a long, long-winded story of how we got here.
Any questions from the board?
This is Sylvia. How long has the building been leased up?
Kirby or Bob, do you guys have an answer to that question? I believe since late 2015, but Bob? I'll defer that to you. Gentlemen?
You need to unmute yourselves if you're attempting to respond.
This isn't my computer, sorry. I couldn't get the mouse up there. But late 2015, we leased all the apartments in a matter of a month or so. The commercials were lots more trouble.
Okay, so you've had a few years to understand what the parking trends are there.
Yeah, the parking there is, if you know this area, across the street, they built a giant parking garage as well, and that one's completely underutilized. You know, we're right, you can see the Belmont train stop is right there. So that's the big reason people want to live here. You don't need a car.
Just to add, the special use would take the parking ratio down to about 0.3 per unit, which is very typical of transit served locations with units of the size that are proposed or that are existing in this building.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we are going to go to 12720S at 668 West Diversey Parkway. And while we're getting that set up, I'm going to read the department's recommendation. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed massage establishment, provided (a) the establishment maintains clear, non-reflective windows on the street-facing building facade, which are not painted over, darkened, or obstructed in any way, on the building facade so that the reception and waiting area is visible from the street; and (b) the special use is issued solely to the applicant Paradise Cliffs LLC." And Counselor, when you are ready?
Good morning. Can you hear and see me?
We can.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and thank you to staff for making this venue possible for us. My name is Liz Butler from the law firm of DLA Piper, located at 444 West Lake Street in Chicago. DLA represents the applicant in this matter, Paradise Cliffs LLC. The applicant is requesting approval of this special use to operate, to authorize the operation of a massage establishment at 668 West Diversey. I'm joined today by representatives of the applicant. Sam Hergot is the vice president of Newcastle Retail Management, the asset manager for the subject property. Joe Davis is the managing member of Dovkin LLC, who is the operator of the proposed massage establishment, and Jason Jarrett, a land use expert with the firm of Ockrent Kissel Associates. I just want to pause here quickly to confirm that each of those witnesses has been promoted to panelists and that they're able to speak and have their microphones unmuted.
Looks like we have, as panelists, I'm going to recognize Mr. Jarrett's expertise while I'm at it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll provide a quick overview of the request, but one point of order before I get started in response to the department's recommendation. The applicant here is the property owner, and they have applied for the special use on behalf of their tenant. Dovkin LLC will be the franchisee and the business licensee for purposes of the massage establishment. I believe that the applicant and the tenant are able to comply with the other recommendations, but to the extent that the special use is limited to the property owner, that would pose challenges for Dovkin in obtaining their license to operate here. We can go into that a little bit later. So to provide an overview, the applicant is requesting a special use to operate a massage envy franchise at the subject property. This massage envy operator is already operating at 810 West Diversey, and approval of this special use will allow them to relocate their existing operations from just several blocks away. This operator has been at their current location for nine years pursuant to a special use and is regarded as a good neighbor and has operated lawfully at that location with no record of violations or complaints. Massage envy is the largest provider of therapeutic massages and skincare in the United States with approximately 1,200 locations throughout the country. At its current location, the operator provides up to 2,000 hours per month to its approximately 1,600 members. They would anticipate the same level of service, given the proximity of the new location to its existing location. The establishment is now and will be, at its new location, staffed by 22 licensed therapists, three estheticians, five front desk associates, and two managers. The location will operate from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 70s per week, and will provide massage services, facials, and assisted stretching. It will include 13 private rooms for massage therapy and skincare treatments. All operations will take place within the building. No additions or expansions of the existing building are proposed, and the subject property is an existing, single-story, multi-tenant building. And again, no additions or expansions of the existing building are proposed. With that, I'll turn to examination of our witnesses, starting with Sam. Mr. Hergot, would you please state your name and address for the record?
Sam Hergot, 216 North Wayola, La Grange, Illinois.
Thank you. And like I mentioned before-
I'll interrupt you for two seconds. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. The applicant Paradise Cliffs LLC is the property owner of the subject property located at 668 West Diversey, right?
Correct.
And you are, your role is, you are the vice president of Newcastle Retail Management, who is the asset manager for the property, right?
Correct.
And Newcastle is also the sole member of the applicant, and you're an authorized representative of the applicant, right?
Correct.
And DLA Piper, as your counsel, submitted an affidavit signed by you in connection with this matter, right?
Correct.
And if you were to continue to testify today, your testimony would be consistent with the proposed findings of fact and your affidavit, right?
Correct.
Thank you. I will, I'll go to Joe next. And then we can come back to any questions for Sam, if that is okay with the board. Mr. Davis, are you on?
I am.
You swear to tell-
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, could you please just state your name and address for the record?
Joe Davis. My address is 183 Water Oak Drive, Ponte Vedra Beach, Florida.
And you're the managing member of Dovkin LLC, who is the proposed operator of the proposed massage establishment that's the subject of this application, right?
Correct.
And you're an experienced massage envy operator and franchisee, correct?
That is correct.
And you're proposing to occupy and operate a massage envy location at the property, and you would be the business licensee for those purposes, right?
Correct.
And DLA Piper, as counsel for your landlord or future landlord Paradise Cliffs, submitted the proposed findings of fact along with an affidavit signed by you in connection with this matter, right?
That is correct.
And if you were to continue to testify today, and if I were to continue to ask you questions, your testimony would be consistent with those findings of fact, right?
That is correct.
Thank you. Next, I'll move to Jason Jarrett. Jason?
Yes.
Could you, the board has recognized you as an expert. Could you just state your name, address, and your business or profession?
Yes, my name is Jason Jarrett, senior associate in-
Yes, my name is Jason Jarrett, Senior Associate and Certified Planner with Oakren Kessel Associates, 122 South Michigan Avenue in Chicago.
We recognize your expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Jason, you were retained by the applicant.
Counselor, give me two seconds. Now, we recognize your expertise. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Jason, you were retained by the applicant to conduct an urban planning analysis of the proposed special use to establish the massage establishment in the existing building, at the subject property, right?
Yes.
And you prepared a report detailing your analysis, and that report is contained in the materials that were submitted to the board and ahead of this hearing, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And if I were to question you, and if you were to testify further, your testimony would be consistent with the findings, conclusions contained in your report, specifically that the proposed special use is consistent with general criteria for approval of special uses, right?
Yes.
Thank you. We can go further into the proposed operations of the tenant, or we can answer any questions. I have no further questions for these witnesses, but we're available at the board's pleasure.
Why don't you go ahead and give us a little bit of overview of the operations, and if that's distinct from any of the other massage establishment operations, and then we'll go to board questions.
Sure. Joe, can I hand it over to you to say a few words about your proposed operations?
Yes. So we will continue to operate the way we've been operating for the last nine years. We, like she stated earlier, we have 1,600 members. We do close to 2,000 massage units a month. We have been, we have multiple locations across the city. There's 44 locations in and across the Chicago region, and as she stated earlier, 1,200 locations across the country. We're the largest provider of massage therapy in the world. So that would be the summary.
Any questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, the, we have to resolve this issue of your applicant and whether you're going to have trouble getting a license from the Department of Business Affairs. So I'm going to just continue this. We'll come back to this at the end of the call, and I'm going to give our staff a few minutes to coordinate with each other and see what it is exactly we would need to do on our end, and if that will ultimately help you, or if we're going to have to figure something else out.
Chairman, we have input from the department. If you want to hear Steve Alenziano.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Alenziano.
Give me one second. Let me... Go ahead, Steve. Go ahead, Steve. Are you there?
Yeah.
Are you there to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say the department would change its recommendation to the special use being issued solely to Massage Envy then. We've had this issue come up a couple times on different LLCs, and so we would just change our recommendation. We're fine with Massage Envy. We're aware of their other location, and we have no issues with that. So that will help you out.
Counselor, do you know if you submitted an EDS for Massage Envy?
So just to clarify, Massage Envy is a, the proposed operator is a franchisee of Massage Envy. Massage Envy is not the applicant or property owner, so we did not file an economic disclosure statement form on their behalf. And to respond to Steve, I think that that modification to the recommendation works so long as it's clear that it's a Massage Envy franchisee and operator, not actual Massage Envy corporate entity.
Do we have an EDS for the franchisee?
We can submit one. We're happy to submit one.
Can you tell me what that entity name is for purposes of this amendment?
Yes. It's Davkin LLC.
Okay, any questions from the board? Let me actually ask Counselor, I don't know the size or complexity of that franchisee, assuming it's a small one. Can you put an EDS together before 2:30 today, before we vote?
I can work with, I can work with Joe.
Yeah. If you would do that, and then we can do this amendment on the requirements, and hopefully you'll be in a good position with licensing.
We'll work on that. Thank you for making that accommodation for us. Appreciate it.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
I do.
Our next item is 14620 S for 2332 West 111th Street.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with the attorney. All of her witnesses, they're all with her physically, so they're all together.
Great. And Counselor, when you're ready, go ahead. Actually, I'm going to read the department's recommendation while you're getting set up. Actually, I'm not. I'm going to have the department read it after. Oh, no, never mind. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair braiding salon."
They can start speaking. They're unmuted. You're here.
Counselor, when you're ready, if you could present your application. We cannot hear you if you are speaking. Okay, we're going to come back to this one at the end of the call. We will move on to 12320Z and 12420Z. This is for 3134 South Shields Avenue and 3136 South Shields Avenue.
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Kolpak. Today, with us, the property owner, Mr. Ferraro, and we have his architect, Mr. Bone, on this presentation. I'm seeing people. Okay, I have everything. I'm sorry. I'm getting used to this. Mr. Chairman, I'm requesting, this is my application, 123-20Z, 124-20Z. They are exactly the same lots, same variations requested, the same ownership. I was wondering if we could consolidate this for purposes, because it will be the same testimony.
Yes.
Again, good morning. My name is Paul Kolpak, office at 6767 North Milwaukee Avenue. Requesting a variation to reuse the front setback from the required 15 feet to that of two feet on Stewart Avenue, the parking setback from the front property line on Stewart Avenue to prevent the obstruction of the sidewalk by parked cars from 20 feet to that of two feet. The unobstructed open space width required along the north property line from five to three feet, the open space along the south property line from five feet to two feet for proposed three-story, three-dwelling unit building with side opening stairs in the north wall and the three enclosed parking spaces on the through lot. The hardship here is really that of a through lot. We have submitted a diagram, which I would ask as diagram 1A. Do you have that?
Remember how you labeled it when you submitted it originally?
We did send it in. It says diagram 1A and diagram 3A and diagram 3B. Essentially, the hardship here is the fact that the definition of a through lot is that you have two front yards. Those are the building plans. And strict compliance would essentially require us to have a building, even though the lot is 125 feet in depth, we would have two front. You cannot choose which front yard you have. So therefore, you have the requirement of a front yard, and then a requirement of another front yard on Stewart. The proposed building will provide a setback of 37 and 1/2 feet, as measured from South Stewart. Will also provide 398 square feet of open space for the three dwelling units. There are five zoning lots configured with principal buildings located at 3140, 4244, 50 and 52 South Stewart that front along South Shields, and that's the front yard that we are selecting, with an accessory garage is located along South Stewart Street. The lot, the lot is classified as an RT residential two-flat townhome, multi-unit district. Subject property is a through lot measuring 25 feet in width along both side frontages with a depth of 125 feet. Under the RT4, this would allow us to develop the three-unit buildings. However, the difficulty is, just we mentioned the definition of a through yard, which states that the standard lot size lacks a rear alley access, because we have two front yards. Essentially, if this is granted, it would not change the characteristics of the neighborhood, because as I mentioned, everybody on Shields, all the lots on Shields are through lots, and they are developed with frontage on Shields with accessory garages off of Stewart. I have no further testimony on this. If I have questions, I have my architect here, and I have my owner available also.
Are there any questions from the board?
This is Zurich Esposito. Can I ask how your group went about giving public notice? And did you get any feedback?
Actually, we did. My client is a lifelong resident of this area. We, as you note, there's a vacant lot, which we are absolutely trying to acquire anyway. We've been in constant contact with that neighbor. We have spoken to the neighbors on both sides of us. They don't see an issue, because they're serviced exactly how we would be serviced off of Stewart for parking.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Let me, yeah, fine. Okay, next, we're going to 12520Z and 12620Z. This is for 2004 West Superior.
Again, I'd like to combine the two cases. They're in conjunction, 12520Z and 12620Z. I'd like to have them heard together. They're the same property, same ownership, et cetera.
Let's proceed that way.
The subject property is presently zoned in an RT single-unit detached district. The subject property, again, is a through lot. This lot measures 24.8 feet width along the side frontages with lot depth of 100 feet, resulting in an area of 2,408 square feet. The applicant seeks four variations. The first variation is to reduce the required front setback along the West Lee Place from 28.3 to zero feet to permit the access to the proposed two-car garage containing the required off-street parking spaces. The second and third variations are to reduce the combined side setbacks from 4.8 to 4.5, with the west side back being two feet.
Sorry, Counselor, I'm going to just interrupt you for two seconds. For our tech support team, can you have our default, I know we had talked about using the spotlight view, but can we transfer that to being able to see the panelists so we can kind of keep track of when all of the different members of the applicant team are as set up as panelists and when they're attempting to speak? Counselor, I'm going to unmute you, and please proceed again.
This is Paul Kolpak again, Chairman, members of the board. And I find the fact, the through lot designation, again, as in our previous case, requires two front yard setbacks. Based on that, we have chosen the setback along Superior Street with alley access for vehicle parking off of Lee Street. The property in question will not alter the characteristics of the neighborhood. Again, I know you do not, that prior findings are not precedent, is not binding on your committee. However, note that the Board of Appeals granted at least four similar variations to the property along West Superior Street, West Lake Place at 2034 Superior Street, calendar number 5511Z, 2048 Superior Street, calendar number 2912Z, 2046 Superior Street, calendar number 20713Z, and 2038 West Superior Street, calendar number 30819Z. Again, hardship here is the fact we have two front lots, and if we could handle the depth of being 100 square, 100 feet in depth. This property did have a garage, at least we can tell, and probably a single-family home sometime prior. We were not able to obtain any information, because it was done a while ago. My client intends on buildings, if it is granted, this will be her single-family place of residence. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can you confirm, I think in the material, and you may have just said it again today, about 12 of the 16 nearby lots have essentially the same front property line configuration as what's being proposed?
Yes, that is true. This is an old, established neighborhood. I'm somewhat familiar with there. I grew up not far from there. And the majority of the lots on Superior Street are all through lots and are all improved with single-family homes with parking access off of Lee Place.
Okay. Counselor, let's get your witnesses on the record. I'd like to square them in, and then just have you confirm that they would testify consistent with the affidavits that they had submitted.
Michelle?
Here.
Michelle, would you please state your name?
Let's, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Go ahead and proceed, Counselor.
Please state your name.
Michelle Apante Backsaw.
And Michelle, you signed an affidavit, and if we were asked to testify any further, you testified substantially in accordance with that affidavit. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this will be your single-family home of residence. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Okay, let's proceed.
Our architect, Alan, are you available? Alan?
Yes.
Alan? Alan? I'm sorry, I've got him. It looks like he's unmuted. Um, Alan?
Yeah.
Okay. Alan, would you please state your name?
My name is Alan Lescue. I am architect of this project.
Alan?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Alan, you were retained by Michelle in order to, uh, develop the drawings for the home located on Superior Street. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And you submitted an affidavit. Is that correct?
Yes.
And if you were called on to testify, you testified in substantial compliance with that affidavit. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have no further questions. If there's any questions for our architect?
No, let's proceed. That's, uh, that's everybody, right?
It's everybody.
Any questions from the board?
Did you just talk a little bit about, this is Sylvia Garcia, uh, the, the lot next door, two thousand six West Superior? Looks like it from the aerial map, it looks a little bit different. Looks like.
Are we talking about the property, uh, right next door?
Yes.
Okay, that property, Michelle, is owned by your mother. Is that correct?
Two thousand and two is owned by my mother-in-law.
Mother-in-law.
Uh, so.
I'm, I'm looking into the other direction. Just, it looks like there's a, a building of some kind at the rear of that lot. And I just want to understand how those two properties interact with each other.
That's what we mentioned before and actually, I really thought this might have been a Danley lot. And, um, we, I had discussion with the city of Chicago on that. And they assured me it was not, that this was only a building, uh, that supported a, um. A single-family home prior to that. Uh, because that was my concern at the very beginning, whether or not we were going to have to have. Michelle's, uh, uh, mother-in-law, uh, be part of this process. And I was assured by zoning that it was not. So that has been taken down.
The, the building at the rear of two thousand and six has been demolished, you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. And it, do you know, you, you know, the ownership of that lot?
I, uh, actually, like we mentioned, the lot adjacent is Michelle's mother-in-law. And she's purchasing this lot from her in order to build her single-family home there.
Okay, my understanding is that her lot was the lot to the, to the right as opposed to the left on the map.
May I, may I say something?
Sure, please, Michelle.
Okay, so two thousand and eight is the building to the west of the lot. The lot is vacant and the, there's a carport at the rear. So I think that this photo is a little bit. The target is a little off because the single-family is two thousand and two where the red dot is. Two thousand and four, which is our subject property, is vacant with a carport in the rear.
Okay, so that little square above the red dot next to two thousand and eight, that's part of your property, you're saying?
Correct. That's a carport, right?
That's what I understand.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions?
Any other questions on the board? Okay, we'll take it under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next matter will be one forty-three, twenty S at thirty-eight, forty-nine to fifty-nine South Halsted. While you're getting set up, I'm going to read the department's recommendation on this one. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the amendments of an existing special, special use for a two-lane drive-through facility to serve a proposed Lakeside Bank. Provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings stated February tenth, twenty twenty, prepared by Papa George Heims.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Paul Colpeck with offices in sixty-seven, sixty-seven North Milwaukee. With me today is the representative of the applicant, uh, Lakeside Bank. His name is Mr. David Pinkerton. He is the president of Lakeside Bank. We have our architect from Papa George Heims, Mr. Steve Rezebeck, and our expert witness, Mr. Paul Wasnicki. Uh, as a background. Lakeside Bank applied for zoning change from the then M one dash two and R three district to B one dash two in October of seventeen. Additionally, we filed a special use application to establish a drive-through facility that was approved. In February of eighteen. We then, uh, applied for building permits to move forward on this project. And at that point in time, the permits were in fact issued. Unfortunately, while we were, uh, ready to begin our, um, development. We received notice from the city of Chicago and they took issue with the conveyance. Back in nineteen ninety-seven, there was a deed issued and signed by the then mayor Daly to my client. Uh, in order to purchase this property, my client did provide the, the requested consideration, uh, for that. And subsequently, the city has taken a position that that conveyance was, uh, incorrect. Uh, that the, uh, property was not owned by the city of Chicago, but rather was, uh, considered right-of-way. And therefore controlled by the Department of Transportation. At that point in time, uh. We entered into negotiations and in order to, uh, avoid, uh, litigating the issue. We've agreed to, uh, quitclaim this property back. Uh, and that would allow the Department of Transportation to widen the right-of-way. They would then vacate the remainder back to the bank so that we could proceed with our development. Uh, this was part of a long negotiation. Uh, we do have a letter from C-DOT, uh, authorizing, uh, this plan. I believe, uh, as you've mentioned, Chairman, that the, uh, uh, Department of Planning was also involved in this negotiation. And they have also agreed, uh, to support, uh, the, uh, new special use.
Okay, can we get, uh, your applicants, uh, on the record and, um?
David, are you available?
I'm here.
David, would you please state your name?
David Pinkerton.
And do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
All right, I've muted your counselor.
I, somebody, somebody.
You're back, counselor. Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, David, you are the president of Lakeside Bank. Is that correct?
I am.
And David, uh, is, you heard my, our testimony on this resulting in the, uh, culmination of this project being a, uh. An agreement between the bank and the city of Chicago Department of Transportation in order to, uh, allow a. This to be vacated and allow a widening of the, um, Pershing Road and Halsted. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And this would, uh, of course, impact our design, which, uh, we have agreed to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, David, uh, if, if this facility goes forward, uh, what would your hours of operation be?
Uh, Monday through Friday, drive-through would be open seven-thirty to five-thirty. The lobby would be open eight to five. We will probably also have Saturday hours between nine and one A, uh, one P M.
And approximately how many, uh, employees would this support?
Uh, roughly eight and eight full-time employees and two part-time employees is what we're expecting.
I have no further questions from Mr. Pinkerton.
Okay, let's proceed.
Um, Mr. Wasnicki? As our expert, Mr. Paul Wasnicki?
We recognize his expertise and, uh, Mr. Wasnicki, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings? Actually, I don't see him on here.
Muted me again.
I did, yeah, I just.
Uh, Mr. Wasnicki is in my office.
Oh, perfect.
So, uh. Mr. Wasnicki, would you please state your name?
My name is Paul Wasnicki.
And your ad, address, please?
Business address is two twenty-one North South Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do, sir.
And we recognize your expertise.
Thank you. You were hired by Lakeside Bank. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And could you please, uh. Describe the scope of your assignment in this case?
Well, I was hired to evaluate whether the granting of the requested special use will comply with the general criteria. For special use approval as set forth in section seventeen thirteen oh nine oh five eight of the Chicago zoning. Dealing specifically with the, the drive-through facility for the proposed bank.
And you, uh, physically went out to see the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
And, uh, you've reviewed the site plan in the survey. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, sir.
And you were able to conclude that there was previously a zoning change as well as a zoning board of appeals that was approved. Is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
And in your opinion, uh, that if you presented your, uh. Report and your court of attorney day, and if you were called to testify, you testified in substantial compliance with that report. Is that correct?
Yes, I would. I'd be more than happy to continue to testify right now if you would.
Uh, Chairman, I would hope we don't. If there's any further questions from. My, uh, expert, I'm happy to answer them.
Let's keep going.
And your testimony would be substantially that this, uh, special use would reach all the criteria, criterion of the specialist requirements. Uh, under the city of Chicago zoning code. Is that correct?
Yes, it would, provided that the board commands to require very special use of the drive-through facility.
I have no further, uh, questions from my expert.
Yeah, let's continue.
Sir, uh, we have no other, uh, not case.
Let me just continue.
Oh, we'll continue on this? Okay, uh, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Rezebeck, is he part of your, this application?
Mr. Rezebeck is really, he's here and Mr. Rezebeck, please state your name.
Yes, this is Steve Rezebeck with Papa George Heims Architects.
And you submitted an affidavit. Is that correct?
Yes, I did.
And if you were called to testify, you would testify in substantial compliance with that?
Uh, yes, that's, that's correct.
No further questions from my architect.
And Mr. Rezebeck, you, uh, swear that your comments in these proceedings were true?
Yes, I do.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much. Everybody stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we are going to go to one twenty-eight, twenty S. This is for fifty, forty, South Archer Avenue.
Maybe let's go back on.
Yes, hello, good morning.
Good morning. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I swear.
Excellent. Why don't you, uh, talk us through a little bit about what you're trying to do?
Okay, um, I'm here with my partner Eduardo de la Torre. My name is Juan Carlos Santian as well. Uh, we both are seeking for a special use to establish a barber shop that is located within a thousand feet of an existing. Uh, personal service located in a B three dash one community shopping district.
Great, and can you talk a little bit about, yeah, your experience in the field?
Yeah, so, um, we, we have actually another barber shop in Berwyn, Illinois. Uh, we've been there for seven years. Um, our barber shops are family-friendly oriented. Um, we strive for professionalism and will provide excellent customer service. Um, our service will include from classic to modern hairstyles for our diverse clientele. Uh, we will also provide discounted services for first, uh, first responders, senior citizens and students as well. Um, uh, we, we also, um. We also strive to actually be involved with our community. Um, we actually, I, I actually serve for an organization. Um, it's called Increase the Peace, um, in Brighton Park area, which is nearly close to the Archer Heights area where we are. We're trying to establish the barber shop. And, um, we interact with teenagers that, that are, I mean, getting out from high school and just. To venture like in businesses like how we are doing now.
And, um, your hours are Monday through Sunday, ten AM to six PM?
Yes, correct.
And, uh, it looks like you're anticipating five, uh, stations?
Yes, five, five barber stations. Um, right now with, right now with all this going on with the COVID. Uh, we are preparing ourselves and our staff, uh, for clientele. I mean, the safety of our staff and clientele is really important to us. So we are really implementing to actually clean and disinfect, sterilize all surfaces and implement. Um, so. So, yeah.
Great, um, department, can you read, uh, your recommendation?
Uh, good morning. My name is Jeanette Velasquez. And I will be reading the recommendation from the Department of Planning and Development. The department recommends approval of the proposed barber shop. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. Is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the barber shop will be compatible with the charact.
Jeanette, sorry, I'm going to mute you for two seconds. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
All right, please continue.
Um, the department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable, applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. Is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the barber shop will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics. And lastly, it is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next, we're going to go to one twenty-nine, twenty S. This is for forty-six, fourteen Northwestern Avenue.
No, no, no. Hello?
Good morning.
Morning, how are you?
Doing well. Can you identify yourself for us, please?
Hi, my name is Lynn Pham. I hear for my father, we found for Lincoln's Winell Incorporated.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceeding?
Um, yeah, I do.
Can you, uh, talk a little bit about, uh, what you're trying to do with your application?
Yeah, yeah, um, uh, we are being have the nail salon in, uh, four six one three North Western, uh, Crossbridge. Eighty already, so, um, we, uh, up out the list. So that's why I tried to move across with four six one four Northwestern. Yeah, uh, we just re-open for the nail salon.
Are you, uh, are you also part of the business?
Uh, yeah, I am the, um, uh, his, uh, daughter.
Got it. And, um. If I remember your application correctly, you've been in business across the street for about eight years with no issues?
Yeah.
Okay, and, uh, same essential operation across the street. Hours are ten AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um. And, um. I remember we have, uh, two people, right, testifying on this matter?
About two people?
Miss, Miss Zhang is also.
Yes, hi, how are you? Good.
Uh, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Can you identify yourself and just tell us your relationship to the, uh, business?
Uh, yes, uh, I, my name is Qing Qing Zhang. I am the owner of the property at forty-six sixteen with Western Avenue in Chicago. Um, and, uh, she had wanted to move her location from across the street into the downstairs, uh, vacant storefront. And that's why we're here.
Got it. Okay, so, um, Miss Velasquez, if you can read the department's recommendation, please?
The department recommends approval.
Uh, I'm just going to assume all of your testimony today. Jeanette is, uh, still under oath.
Yes, correct. Uh, the department recommends approval of the proposed nail salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience, and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds the nail salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics. And lastly, it is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you, any questions from the board? Okay, we will take it under consideration, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
We are gonna go to one thirty five twenty Z next, it's twenty nine hundred West Twenty Fifth Street. Good morning. Can you identify yourself for us, please?
Yes, sir, my name is Maria Saavedra from twenty nine hundred West Twenty Fifth Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two three.
And are you the applicant, or is it your mother and you're translating for your mother?
I I am the applicant, and my daughter is here with me as well.
Got it, you're the mother, okay, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you just to talk us through a little bit about what you're seeking to do with this application?
Yes, sir, I'm seeking for to obtain the the permit to keep my gate as it is due to, um, we, I I guess the only problem is the height. And whoever installed or did this work didn't tell us that we needed a permit. I wasn't aware of the city regulations. And this gate was already installed, and the city just said that I need to obtain a a permit for it. I just had to, I guess. It doesn't obstruct anybody, any other properties or anything. Can my daughter talk instead of me, because she's she's got more experience?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
It doesn't, doesn't.
Before you you continue, I'm just gonna do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Daisy Sarada. So it doesn't obstruct light for any other building at all, or air or anything, it's just taller. And it's actually the same.
If you're in the same room as your mother, can you have her volume?
Yes.
I think that's the cause of our echo. Okay, you wanna try again?
Okay, thank you, sorry about that.
No worries. Okay, go ahead, you were saying?
Obstruct air. Also, I was looking at like the questions that we had to do for the gate and the application, and that was some of them, and that was a concern. It's the same gate that was there before, so it's it's just, it's just a little taller. It's, so, yeah.
Yeah, so the the if I remember from your application, the you were having some security problems originally, you
Yes, they stole a lawnmower.
Lawnmower?
Yeah.
And
And bikes.
And bikes, and so you built a found out later you needed to have a permit for it. Your hardship that you're claiming under this variation is essentially that it's gonna be a financial difficulty for you to take it down. Is that correct? And from the measurement that you had provided, it's about five feet to the top of the bottom portion of the bars. They're all see-through, there's a pretty, there's a see-through gap above it. Got a couple bars that enable the rolling, and then it's its highest point, it's about eight feet and eight and a half, those sort of sides.
Yeah.
And then I think you had mentioned that similar, your neighbors might have something similar to this. Okay.
Uh, we, those were the last pictures that we provided to the person at the
So many people, I'm sorry to in the role, but so many people in my area has tall gates, even taller than mine, I provided pictures of all the gates that are only two blocks from my house, from the alley. But it's it's, you know, like, I don't know if they they got the permit to keep those or not, you know, like I said, I wasn't aware of the city regulations, but this wasn't, my my gate was installed without me, you know, like, without noticing that I needed a permit for the height.
Do you remember how much it costs you to build the gate?
Yes, it was eleven hundred.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you, we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Take care. We're going to go back right now to one forty six twenty S. I believe we've resolved our audio problems, this is one forty six twenty S at twenty three thirty two West one hundred eleventh Street.
I'll be I can't, you have to unmute yourselves to speak.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna take a ten minute recess anyway, and why don't we attempt to fix the audio issue for this application while we're there, and if we can, we'll reconvene and start on that one. So we're gonna take a ten minute recess, we will reconvene at ten thirty seven AM. Okay, I move we reconvene this session of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Esposito, I see is here, Commissioner Saul is here, Commissioner Garcia, and Commissioner Toya, on favor, say aye.
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 Eyes have it, we are on one forty six twenty S. Let's see if we have resolved our audio issues.
I mean.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay.
Department's recommendation, I won't repeat it, why don't you go ahead, counselor, and walk us through application?
Okay, my name is a better AK Chuku, I am with a very unique one associated SPC, I represent Seacat and I who doing business as a glory African beauty, a hair braiding business located at two three three West one hundred and eleven Street, Chicago. The applicant seeks special use in order to use the premises for a hair braiding shop. Applicant is not the owner of the building, but rents from the owner, Mr. Khan. Two witnesses will testify, Mr. Tonah, who the owner of the business, and Mr. Hugh Edifos, independent zoning consultant. We are ready to proceed with your testimony.
Let's proceed, please.
The first witness will be Miss Tonah, who the owner of the business.
Are they in the room with you?
Yes, I did.
Okay, can you, I just, I need to swear them in, so do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
My name is Sika.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay. Please state your name for the record. State your name for the record.
My name is Sika Tonah, who, my business name Glory African Beauty.
Okay, are you currently located at two three three, two three three two West one hundred and eleven Street, Chicago? Yes, okay, uh, do you conduct hair braiding business at this location?
Yes.
Okay, are you the owner of the buil- building?
No.
Okay, you have applied for special use in order for you to continue to use this location for your hair braiding business, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the next building braiding shop is located more than one thousand feet apart from you, your location, is that correct?
Yes.
This location is at one hundred one zero six eight six South Western Avenue, is that correct?
Yes.
The only personal service located within a thousand feet from your location is a barber shop, is that correct?
Yes.
Do you intend to comply with the special use if granted?
Yes.
Okay, that'll be all for her for now. I would like to call Mr. Edifos, the consultants that prepared and the reports that we submitted along with the application. Yes, he is.
Okay, we recognize Mr. Edford's expertise, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name.
Hugh, sorry, Hugh Edforce.
Okay. Are you with Urban Real Estate Research, Inc.?
Yes.
What is your position?
I'm a consultant to Urban Real Estate Research, Inc., and I have been for many, many years.
Okay, um, you were contacted contacted by the applicant, Seacat Tonah, is that correct?
Correct.
This, she contacted you regarding her application for special use of the premises located at two three three two West one hundred and eleven Street, Chicago, for her hair braiding shop, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, did you go out to the application, to to the location, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Did you assess the appropriateness of the proposed special use of the premises?
Yes, I did.
Did you prepare a report?
Yes.
Okay. The deal specifically, did you make a determination regarding whether the premises met the criteria required for special use?
Yes, I did.
Specifically, does the hair braiding shop comply with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Is the hair braiding business compatible with the public interest and will not adversely impact the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay. Is the, is it compatible with the surrounding area in terms of site planning and buildings for them buildings?
Yes.
Okay, is it compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of operating characteristics such as hours of operation?
Also, yes.
Okay. You prepared a report, is there anything you want to add to this application?
No, it's complete, and my report is complete, it's very detailed.
That'll be all for the witness, I don't know if you have any questions for him?
Oh, let's keep going, I think that's it from your end, right? Do you have any further witnesses, counselor?
No, that'll be all for the for this application.
I would like to ask the applicant if you can tell us a little bit about your experience in this field.
Hello.
Can you tell the the board wants to know your experience with the hair braiding business, how long have you been doing this?
Ten years ago.
You have been doing hair braiding for ten years?
Yeah, ten years and then suddenly.
What kind of services do you provide?
I'm braiding. I'm braiding. I'm braiding.
Okay, can you explain to the 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 people that you pretty have for?
Black people. Like, um, French braider, Bas braider, Senegal Estu, and
Is this first, the first
More.
You run on your own?
Yes. Are you on the, are you, are you on the, on your own?
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you very much, we'll take it under consideration.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Next, we are going to one forty one twenty Z and one forty two twenty Z, this is for twenty two twenty West Dickens Avenue. And Mr. Shetty, when you're ready, if you'd identify yourself for us?
Hi, my name is Jay Shetty, I'm both the applicant and homeowner at twenty two twenty West Dickens Avenue.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Can you just talk us through what you're trying to do?
Sure. First, I'd like to say thank you for setting up the virtual meeting, really appreciate that. Basically, the purpose of both my variation applications is to build a small roof dormer over my bathroom. Currently, the ceiling over the shower is sloped and low. The the bathroom is at the edge of the house, where the the roof slopes down. So when you're taking a shower, frequently hit your head on the ceiling. So basically, the dormer would allow us to have full ceiling height over the shower. Working with my architect, we've made all the design changes to the drawings that were recommended by this Department of Buildings. We have notified all neighbors within a hundred feet. I posted a public sign on my property, and we have received no objections from the community.
And from your application, the hardship on this variation is that your existing house does not comply, it sounds like, with your setback requirements?
Correct.
Your lot is a little narrow and it's a little short.
Correct, it's, uh, the existing house is about a foot setback from the last property line. Correct, it's, uh, the existing house is about a foot setback from the last property line.
Got it, and the dormer is going to match, you know, it's run along your existing walls and it's about sixty-four square feet. Does that sound right?
Uh, that's correct. It'll run along the existing west wall, exterior wall. I believe, yeah, sixty square feet.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, we will take it under consideration. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we're going to go to one nineteen and one twenty twenty. This is for twenty-four oh two West Carmen Avenue. And counselor, when you're ready, go ahead.
Yes, this is attorney Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney with offices at seventy-seven West Washington. And I represent the applicant and I have with me today, signed on, I believe, my associate Agnes Plekka. Also, on behalf of the applicant, Sander Karen, and also John Hannah of Hannah Architects, the project architect. And the building and project listed as twenty-four oh two West Carmen, we have two cases with respect to this building and project. The first case listed on the agenda is a case for a reduction of the rear setback. We propose to do a mixed-use building with commercial on the ground floor, residential on the upper floors. And despite the fact it's a business district, there is a rear setback requirement for the upper floors that contain the dwelling, the dwelling units. The second case has to do with the loading space and we are asking variation to eliminate one required loading space. So with that, I would note just for clarification, we're showing an address at twenty-four oh two West Carmen. But this property is at the corner of Carmen and Western. And for zoning purposes, our front lot line is on Western and the rear lot line is along the alley to the west. So there is a sixteen-foot public alley at the rear of the property. Properties currently improved with an old vacant building that last housed at Bar and Restaurant. And also, next door was an auto repair shop with a driveway onto Western Avenue. And those two buildings will be demolished and the project calls for building a new mixed-use building on the site. This project also involved a zoning change, so we had actually an extensive community process. Submitted the plans to the alderman, put it on his website, called for a community meeting, which was well attended, standing room only. And we explained the project. After the meeting, it was still open for community comments. And the consensus was the community had two concerns. This particular property, obviously on Western Avenue, Western Avenue bus corridor now is a transit, provides for a transit serve location. So this is a TOD site. Our original plan did take a parking reduction. We were allowed up to a fifty percent parking reduction. So the original plan did show reduced parking. The community thought because of parking considerations in the neighborhood, that the project would be better if we provided full one-to-one parking. They also had a concern with the original plan, which called for a driveway on Carmen. So in response to the community concerns, we got rid of the driveway on Carmen. Now all parking is accessed through the public alley at the rear of the property. And we did alter the first floor plan and increased the parking to what we show now, which is one-to-one parking for the twenty-four units. The problem was in the process of making that revision, we lost the one loading space that we were originally showing on the plan. And that's why we have the second case to excuse that loading space. So with those changes, we went forward and city council reason on the, we zone the subject property at the request of the alderman, done as a type one application, and that's the plan before you today. So going forward, this plan, we believe, supports the purpose of the ornaments. We're doing commercial on the ground floor, despite the fact that especially with this virus, the the market for the commercial space is a little uncertain, but we are doing it. Promote transit use. We've got our twenty-four units on Western Avenue, transit accessible. Also, a short distance from the Western Avenue Brown Line Rapid Transit Station. And also, it provides a range of housing choices, not only the twenty-four units, but in connection with the zoning change. The applicant promised to address the alderman's concern about affordable housing. And he owed two ARO affordable units and did promise the alderman he would do those two units on site. So we do have a range of housing choices. Particular difficulties, perhaps some project problem with the rate of return. We need the unit count in order to afford doing the ARO units. And again, the market for the commercial space might be a little uncertain going forward. Our unique circumstance is we have a short lot. This is a substandard lot, only one hundred and five feet deep compared to the standard lot of one twenty-five. And so because of the short lot makes it difficult to provide that full thirty-foot rear setback. And again, we do have that sixteen-foot public alley at the rear of the property. Also, a corner parcel, probably the longer building, a little more appropriate on that corner parcel. And we would note will not change the essential character of the neighborhood. Previously, we submitted pictures showing two buildings on the east side of Western that have a zero rear setback. So we're compatible with those. And actually, the trend of development in the neighborhood. We would note that actually in recent years, there were three buildings across the street on the east side of Western that actually came before the board and got relief on their rear setback requirement. And we submitted copies of those resolutions, and these were properties at fifty oh three Northwestern, forty-nine eleven Northwestern, and twenty-three fifty-two West Winona, which is the corner of Winona and Western. So I think the trend with the newer buildings is to seek some relief on that rear setback requirement. So if this variation is granted, will not alter, alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And again, in that second space, we're asking, the second case, we're asking to excuse the loading space. I would note this is a corner property. We have parking allowed both on Western and Carmen. There's a side door in Carmen and the applicant with his experience renting property in the neighborhood believes that he won't need the loading space and that the available street parking will be sufficient for moving in and out. So with that introduction, uh, the applicant and the architect have submitted affidavits and I'd be happy to introduce those affidavits. I call Sander Carmen first. Sander, are you on here?
Yes, I am.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
And Sander, please state your name and your business address.
Sandra Karen, forty-three fifty-one North Lincoln Avenue, Chicago.
Good, Sander, are you the manager member of the Western Carmen Building LLC?
Yes, I am.
The true, your LLC owns the subject property?
Yes.
Also that you signed an affidavit in connection with the case here today, and we submitted that application on your behalf?
Yes, I did.
If I was continue to quiz you on this matter, is it true your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it is. Yes, it would be.
We stand on his affidavit unless you had more specific questions.
No, let's proceed.
Uh, next, I'd call John Hannah. John, are you on?
I am.
Good, would you state your name and your address?
John Hannah, President of Anarchic Think, one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Go ahead, counselor.
And you are the project architect, John?
I am.
John, also true that you had signed an affidavit that we had submitted on your behalf for this case?
I did.
And if I was to continue to question you, is it true your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
So, Mr. Chairman, we'd stand on his affidavit unless you had more specific questions.
No, let's proceed. We'll do questions at the end.
Okay, well, I, I think we'd stand on there to have the two affidavits unless you had a more specific question from either witness.
Can you talk through a little bit, um, with the hardship? Without the variation, you, um, essentially, your response would be that you have to increase the height of the building, is my understanding from your application. To what you're allowed under the dash three. Can you explain a little, just tie that, tie that in a little bit with how that affects your parking and your rate of return?
Sure, and ask the, actually, Mr. Chairman, I think as we've discussed this case during the, uh, during the months that the case has been continued. I think I would narrow that explanation down just a little bit. Where it's true that in the zoning district, we would ordinarily be, be able to, uh, to build a taller building. But as a practical matter, uh, the request was to, for us to do the commercial on the ground floor. But the further request was to limit the height of the building, despite the zoning change in the zoning district, to limit the height of the building to four stories.
When you say request, you mean from community process?
From the community and the aldering, correct. So our particular circumstances, our first floor is devoted to commercial and parking. So we only have three floors available for the dwelling units, second, third, and fourth. So our problem is despite our zoning district, in order to get the allowable floor area and get his unit count, which he needs for the reasonable return. We need the variation. On this short lot, which is only a hundred and five feet deep, if he had to set this back a full thirty feet. I, I think that Sander would confirm that instead of twenty-four units, he'd have to reduce his unit count down to eighteen. And given the fact he's already promised the alderman two onsite ARO units. If he had to reduce that unit count from twenty-four to eighteen, he would no longer have a reasonable rate of return. Especially given the fact that the market for that commercial unit, you know, could be a little problematic going forward after this virus.
If I understand you correctly, the drop from twenty-four to eighteen is because of the keeping within that boundary of the four-foot height that was promised.
Uh, that, that, that's part of it, yes.
Okay, um, and on the loading zone, the, if I understood correctly, your, you still have a space for loading zones. It's just not large enough to count technically.
Exactly, but we also, I just wanted to emphasize, because it's a corner property, we've got the frontage both on Western and Carmen. Parking's allowed on both streets. There's a door in the building on the Carmen side. So it's also very possible that, you know, the street parking would be, uh, suitable for the loading and unloading, but as a fallback position, if you had to, you can make space inside for that moving truck.
And are you applying for a loading zone on Western? I think there was a reference in your materials.
He, he, he's talked to the alderman about that. He's initiated that discussion. And we will follow through for a form of, a formal loading zone. But I was suggesting that as of today, with or without it, the street parking is adequate, but he does intend to continue that conversation about the loading zone.
And that it sounds like was not a specific request from the community or the alderman?
No.
Any questions from the board?
Can you talk, this is Sylvia Garcia, can you talk about any communications with twenty-four fourteen West Carmen? Neighbor that would be right directly behind the building?
I don't think we heard specifically from that building. And I forget if they were at the community meeting or not. We had a, a lot of community input over, you know, over weeks and months because the alderman first put it on the website. We had the large community meeting, which was well attended, so I think the word was out there pretty well. And the alderman took comments afterwards, so I don't recall any specific comments from that house. We had some comments from people down that block. And it was one of the reasons that we got rid of the driveway because they thought that, that the present plan is more pedestrian friendly, using the alley for access to the parking.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Next stop is one thirty-one twenty Z at thirty-three fifty-seven to fifty-nine West Thirty-seventh Place.
We okay to start?
I think we might be waiting on a couple of your, uh. I've only got you in this unit so far.
Everyone is in.
Okay, go ahead, counselor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney with offices at seventy-seven West Washington. Represent the applicant. And this is for the, uh, property thirty-three thirty-seven dash fifty-nine West Thirty-seventh Place. And hopefully, I do have on the, uh, on the call, my associate, Agnes Plekka. And also, on behalf of the, the applicant and owner. Hopefully, we've got Will Wu and his wife Caroline, if they're both on.
Yes.
Also, I believe our project architect, Jose Espo. So with that said, our situation is, as the picture shows, we've got the, we've got the existing, uh, existing corner building that, that sits on this double lot, thirty-three fifty-seven fifty-nine. And what he, the applicant owner is attempting to do is to divide the larger improved zoning lot and build a new single-family home on resulting vacant lot adjacent to the existing building. And the existing building would remain. And the, the actual relief we're asking for is the variation to reduce the front setback to zero. That's for the existing building, which you can see is an old building, might have been originally built as a storefront building. But the existing building has the zero setback, and that's the subject of this particular case. And again, the existing building, we're asking to reduce the west setback also to zero. Because as you can see from that site plan, the building sits on the lot line, both on the front and on the west side. The further relief is the combined setback. So the plan is to keep the existing building, build a new single-family home on the resulting vacant lot. And the real hardship here is the historic development of this block is one, one building per lot. Actually, these two, if these cases are approved, these two lots will still be the largest lots on the block. Most lots being either twenty-four or twenty-five feet wide. So merely trying to divide the improved zoning lot and add one single-family home in a neighborhood that could use some, some new development. So with that, I'd like to, uh, first quiz, Will Wu, Will, are you on there?
Uh, yes, sir.
Will, would you state your name and your address?
Uh, yes, my name is Waylon Wu. Uh, the address is six zero one East Thirty-second Street, Unit PH two, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one six.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Go ahead, counselor.
And Will, is it true you are a member and manager of the LLC?
Uh, yes.
And that your LLC owns the subject property?
Yes.
And Will, is it true you signed an affidavit for this case, which we submitted on your behalf?
Yes.
And if I were to further question you in this case, would your answers be consistent to what you said in the affidavit?
Yes.
Good, and Will, is Caroline on the call also?
Yes.
Hello, Caroline. And Caroline, did we, did we state your name and your address?
Okay.
Oh, we didn't swear, Caroline.
Now, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Good. And Caroline, true that you signed an affidavit that we submitted on your behalf?
Yes.
And if I were to question you in this case, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Good. Thank you, Caroline. So I think we'd stand on their affidavits unless you had a specific question.
No, let's proceed, and then we'll do questions at the end.
Good. Jose, are you on?
I am here.
Thank you. Jose, would you state your name and your address?
My name is Jose Espojo, and my office is at 329 West 18th Street, Suite 904A.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor.
And Jose, is it true that your firm is the project architect in this case?
Yes.
Also true that you signed an affidavit that we filed for you in connection with this case?
Yes.
And if I were to continue to question you?
Actually, no. What was that?
There is a point of correction. Actually, it was Caesar who was who's also from the same architectural firm. And it was Caesar who fought who signed affidavit. So we filed Caesar's affidavit.
Sorry about that.
And I am on the call as and I am on the call as well. This is Caesar Santoy. It's to your ARQ.
Good. In that case, I stand corrected. Thank you. Thank you, Agnes. I'd I'd like to quiz Caesar instead, just for simplicity.
Let's do that. Mr. Santoy, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay, Caesar, is it true that you and your firm are the project architect for this project?
Yes.
Also true that actually you had signed the affidavit that we had filed in connection with this case?
Yes.
And if I were to continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with your affidavit? Your answer is in the affidavit. If we were to continue to question you, you would testify consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Good. So I think we would like to stand on Caesar's affidavit unless you had some more specific questions.
No, I think that's all your witnesses? Or are we missing any?
Yes.
Any questions from the board?
Can you talk a little bit more about the, this is Sylvia Garcia, can you talk a little bit more about the existing structure? You said we think it's very old and was additionally originally a commercial building? Do you have any documentation about that? Can you talk about that a little bit?
We we do not. I was just speculating with respect to the setbacks or lack of setbacks. But we it's an old building, there is a lack of permit records. So the need for the variation is to allow us to keep that building as is with the zero setbacks.
It just it looks very different than the rest of the neighborhood. So I was just trying to understand a little bit more about the history of that structure.
Well, that's true. Unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the city with whatever records they have. I would just like to point out that with or without this variation, the building's been there all those years. And the neighborhood has not suffered from it, and it'll continue to be there.
And just, this is Zurich Esposito, and just for clarification. Can you describe the future of the existing building and its ownership?
Sure. Will, are you you best to to address that?
Sure, we can. We're in the process actually completing the renovation. It's going to retain as a single family home with a garage and a rear. No change to the outside and was updated from siding to inside of the home. Four four bedroom house and then no basement. So that's about it.
And it will be rented?
Oh, no, it will be a single family home.
For sale?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
And Will, Will, if I could, Will, is it true that if you're allowed to develop the vacant lot with a new single family home? The profit from that development will help pay for the repairs to the existing building?
Correct, right.
Thank you.
And your hardship essentially, Counselor, is that in addition to the existing house, obviously being nonconforming. You're relying, to your point, on the sale and development of the the new lot, the second lot. Essentially get a 10% rate of return once you've accounted for the existing rehab at the existing place.
Yes, that's true.
And outside of the variation hardship is essentially that you've you've lost all of your underwater, given the current renovation going on in the existing place.
Correct, there'd be no profit.
And is are your clients, are you actually doing the development or you're just going to sell the lot?
Will, would you address that, please?
Oh, we are going to do the development as we proposed, a single family bungalow home, first lower basement.
Got it. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
13220Z is up next. This is 3207 North Longdale Avenue. Counselor, once we have the rest of your witnesses on, I can ask you to kind of walk through this one in detail.
Everyone is in.
Everyone's in. Okay, Counselor, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Mark Kupiak. I'm an attorney with offices at 77 West Washington. I represent the applicant. And I have with me on the call today, I have my associate, Agnes Plekka. On behalf of the applicant, I've got Stan Plutum. And we also have John Hannah of Hannah Architects, the project architect. And we've got only one case here. We're looking for a relief on the on the rear setback. The proposal here is for a mixed use building with commercial on the ground floor with dwelling units above. It's a business district, so there is a rear setback requirement for those floors, the upper floors that contain the dwelling dwelling units. I'd also point out in this case that as shown on the agenda, we've got the address of 3207 North Longdale. But for zoning purposes, the front lot line is on Belmont Avenue, and the rear lot line is along the alley. And we do have a 16-foot public alley at the rear of the rear of the property. A good shot of the rear of the building, as you could see, the existing building is a two-story building, built lot line, the lot line. All the way to that rear lot line, so it currently has a zero rear setback. So that's the building that we're going to replace. We further state that the existing building houses, I don't know if it still does, but historically has housed a radio station. And if we had that picture of the front of the building, the windows at the front of the building had been filled in with glass block. And the door at the very corner of the building, and again, this building sits at the corner of Longdale and Belmont. But that door in the corner has been permanently sealed, I'm guessing because the radio station really had no need for for windows. Okay, so we propose a new mixed use building, commercial on the ground floor, residential up above. And this project also required a zoning change, and with Alderman Reboires, we had an extensive community process. We submit our materials to the Alderman. Alderman asked for a community meeting, asked us to mail notice for the community meeting. Asked us to notify not just property owners, but all registered voters within 250 feet, which we did. We got a community right meeting right down the street on Belmont, well attended. And we had a lot of suggestions. We had representatives, especially from the Avondale Community Association. Which is generally located just north of Belmont Avenue, north of the subject property. And they had two concerns at the community meeting. And probably the biggest concern was commercial on the ground floor. One of the challenges on this project is that this stretch of Belmont is currently not a good stretch for commercial. Commercial storefronts, commercial usage. The south side of Belmont is residential, so really no stores. The north side of Belmont, which we're located on, historically, the buildings did have storefronts on the ground floor. But it's not a good business strip currently, and a lot of those storefronts are either vacant or have been converted to residential use. I note from the zoning map, at least three of those stores on the north side of Belmont came before the board for special uses. To allow them to convert their first floor space to residential. So currently, not a not a good market for commercial space. However, the community group, their plan, their vision for the street is with new development, hopefully to revitalize. This stretch of Belmont for business use. They think with the new developments coming in, if each development would provide some commercial space on the ground floor, that they could revitalize the whole strip. With respect to developer, of course, this is just an extra cost to provide that commercial space. Again, currently, the market is uncertain, and actually, after this virus situation, probably even more uncertain. For the developer, would have been better to do residential on the ground floor. However, to respect the community's concern, we're doing the commercial on the ground floor despite these uncertainties. But then, of course, makes it more important that we we get our needed residential space to realize that reasonable return. In this case, also, both the community and Alderman Reboires would not support a zoning change for a building more than four stories high. So the first floor devoted to commercial and parking, we only have the second, third, and fourth floor for our residential units. So we think that this particular project does support the the purpose of the zoning ordinance. Because we're doing commercial on the ground floor, which contributes hopefully to a vibrant business area. It promotes transit use because we're developing new residential units. This is not transit served, but we're within walking distance of the Rapid Transit Station at Belmont and Kimball. So it's actually a good spot for new development. And it's also going to increase housing choices in the neighborhood. The big difference is here, the the plan before you shows three-bedroom units. And the developer, who's very familiar with the neighborhood, thinks that there's a demand for three-bedroom units. Because three that bedroom units are more family friendly and might be available for family use. Generally, the older buildings in the neighborhood have smaller apartments, not really suitable for a family. But the three-bedroom units are larger and would accommodate a family. The difference is, we've got nine dwelling units either way, with or without the variation. But with the variation allows us to three-bedroom units, without that variation, it's cut down to smaller two-bedroom units. Which, of course, we think is not as good for the potential tenants in the neighborhood. And then cuts down on the income of the of the project below a reasonable reasonable rate of return. Some of these costs are fixed. The land cost is fixed. The is an elevator building, which again is an amenity for the potential tenants. The elevator cost is fixed. He's got the extra expensive commercial space on the ground floor. And at the community meeting, the second concern, the other concern of the community was the fact that this is a corner property. And it's got the it's got the frontage on Longdale. So actually, the original plan, they asked for some changes. They asked for some upgrades to the facade on the Longdale side. They wanted more detail. They wanted to upgrade the materials, et cetera. So based on those community suggestions, the architect went back and did revise his plan. And the the developer okayed those changes. So they upgraded the facade on the Longdale side at the expense of the developer. And that revised plan was supported strongly by both the Alderman and the community group. So what I'm suggesting is that our costs are fixed with the land cost, the commercial space, the facade on Longdale, the elevator. And we really need the variation to allow the larger three-bedroom units. So that the developer could get the income from those units to realize a reasonable rate of return.
Counselor, is that? Is that, there was a reference in your application that without the variations, you would build higher? Is is what you're saying now taking into account a six-story building or that you get it for?
And again, during during this process, as we've reviewed this internally, okay. I would say more specifically, that reference was to the fact in the zoning district, potentially, you could build higher. But this case also, with our meeting before the community and our discussion with the Alderman. Despite the zoning district, they also want wanted to and insist that the height be limited to a four-story building. So we don't have the option of going higher. We're stuck at four stories. We only have second, third, and fourth stories. So we have nine units with her with or without the variation. But if we have to observe that full 30-foot rear setback, our units would be smaller, and they would be two-bedroom units, not three-bedroom units. We think for the detriment of the people in the neighborhood who might prefer those three-bedroom units, especially the potential for families.
And can you walk through the impact on your rate of return? Because I think what you had submitted was under a model where you would actually be at six stories. But it sounds like that's no longer what you're relying on. So the difference between getting the variation and not getting the variation at this four-story with the different unit size. And if that's better served for one of your witnesses, why don't we go through and get all your record, and we can have the appropriate person answer?
Yeah.
Could I could I just say as a point of clarification that?
Yourself for the record.
Yes, this is Agnes Plekka. I'm an attorney with law office of Mark Kupiak. So the actually, actually, the profit margin exhibit that you have in front of you that we have submitted. Lists two options, and option one actually shows the four-story building with nine dwelling units with only two bedroom. Each each unit being only a two-bedroom unit. So the profit margin exhibit that you have in front of you shows both options with four-story buildings.
Yeah, and so it's a difference of 9% return and 1% of memory serves.
Yeah, yeah, less than 1%, basically, yes.
Okay, then, Counselor, let's get your witnesses on record.
Sure, Stanley Pluta, Stan, are you on the call?
Yes. This is Stanley Pluta.
You're going to swear you in.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Stan, state your name and your address.
Stanley Pluta, 1801 North Humboldt Park.
And Stan, is it true that you are the member manager of the, I'll strike that, you are the president of Wilmot Construction Incorporated?
Yes.
Also true that your corporation owns the subject property?
Correct, yes.
Stan, also true that you signed an affidavit for this case today, and we filed that application on your behalf?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you in this case, is it true that your answers would be similar to what you stated in that affidavit?
Yes, correct.
I think with that, then with my introduction, we would stand on Stan's affidavit unless you had more specific questions. John Hannah, are you on there, Jen?
I am.
State your name and your address.
John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., 180 West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
True that you are the you and your firm are the project architects for this project?
That is correct.
Also true that you signed an affidavit in connection with this case today, and we filed it on your behalf?
I did.
Also true, if I continue to quiz you in this case, your answers would be consistent with that affidavit?
They would.
And, Mr. Chairman, we'd stand on John's affidavit unless you had more specific questions.
No, any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just one thing with respect to the. Effect on the neighborhood, this will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Again, it seems that the newer buildings oftentimes seek this relief on the rear setback. There is a. There's a recent building built just across the street from the subject property at 3743 West Belmont. And in that particular, that particular project came before the board just last year for relief on their 30-foot rear setback. And that relief was granted actually on an interior lot. So I think if a relief is granted in this case, will not change the character of the neighborhood, because that does seem to be the trend with new construction.
Okay, any other questions on the board? And thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Next up is 1. Next up is one twenty-two twenty Z at, uh, one oh eight one five South St. Louis Avenue. Okay, counselor, it looks like you have all your witnesses queued up, so go ahead.
For the record, this is Tom Moore. And, um, this case is a small, uh, sixty by seventy-seven odd sized lot with a, um, long several hundred foot, uh, north, south, um, lot behind it, um, and no alley. And, um, basically, uh, we're asking for a side yard to reduce the side yard from eighteen to fourteen, uh, to allow a, uh, a, uh, side driveway. And, um, I have, um, Michael Clancy and his architect, Michael Ryan. And I'd ask them questions if, if you don't have any other questions.
The general, generally, counselor, the hardship is that your lot is significantly substandard, looks like sixty by seventy-seven?
That's right, and also no alley, uh, so that there's no access and we need to get to a garage. So we need a slight variation, uh, to be able to do that.
Got it. Uh, okay, let's get your, uh, witnesses on the record.
Okay, Michael, are you there?
Yes.
So Michael, you were, are kind of a small time, uh?
Counselor, sorry, I'm, for a second, um, Mr. Clancy, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, counselor, continue.
So Michael, you, um, renovate and build small, um, houses on the far south side, is that right?
That's correct.
And, um, you and I went through all the criteria necessary for this board to grant your relief on this lot. And, um, if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, is that right?
That is correct.
And you actually submitted a, an analysis of your, um, uh, of how you could make a profit on this. And, uh, if you have the variance, you could make a small profit of about six point eight percent. Uh, and you think if you didn't get the variance, you'd actually lose money on it, uh, by about two percent, is that right?
That's right.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your affidavit that we've previously filed, is that right?
That's correct.
And, uh, Michael Ryan, are you there?
Yes.
Uh, so Michael, you're a licensed architect, are you?
Yes.
And, um, you've designed the house, um, for this, uh?
Counselor, I'm going to interrupt you again for two seconds. Mr. Ryan, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
And if you were, you and I, uh, worked out an affidavit whereby you went through each of the criteria and used your expertise to answer the questions, um, that were put to you regarding the criteria necessary for this board to grant, uh, the variance, is that right?
That's right.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your affidavit?
Yes.
I think that's all we know.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you, we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
We have the same witnesses for the next case.
Okay, so next up is one thirty twenty Z at, uh, one zero five oh four South Spalding.
And in this case, um, again, we have no alley. We have, um, a non-conforming R two lot. And, um, the, uh, the house, the current house shares a driveway. And, uh, the hope is to have the new lot have its own driveway. And, uh, so we're asking for, uh, a side yard variance to allow us to do that. Here again, we have Michael and Mike. Um, Michael, um, here again, this is a, a lot that you've purchased to build a single family home, is that right?
That's correct.
So I'm just, for both of you, you're still under oath, okay?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, no.
And you, um, and I went through all the criteria necessary for the board to grant this, uh, variance. And, um, if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, your affidavit, is that right?
That's correct.
And here again, um, your profit margin is small. This, this is a, uh, a, a lot in a, in a market that's, um, uh, not a, a big home market. And if you were, got the variance, your analysis, you believe you could make a profit of about thirty-eight thousand dollars, which would be about, uh, just sort of eight percent, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
But if you're, don't, if you're not allowed to have its own driveway, if you have to have a shared driveway, you believe that, uh, you'd actually lose about one percent. And, uh, when considering all your building costs and your purchase cost, et cetera, is that right?
That's right, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with the affidavit and the analysis that we filed with the board, is that right?
That's right, yes.
Uh, and then, uh, Mike Ryan, here again, you designed a house that would, uh, fit on this, um, non-conforming lot, is that right?
Yes.
And it has no alley, so, uh, you've designed it in such a way to put the garage in the front, is that right?
That's correct.
And it will have its own driveway and, uh, um, your design would allow it to have its own driveway with the garage in the front, is that right?
Yes.
And so, uh, you and I worked out an affidavit addressing each of the, uh, criteria necessary for this board to grant the variance. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that affidavit, is that right?
Yes.
Chairman, I think that's all I have unless there are questions.
Can you expand a little bit, uh, for me on the connection between the, um, MLA, uh, and sort of the size of the lot?
Well, well.
The size and the size of this FX?
Yes, sir. A standard, um, uh, R two lot, uh, the, the classic R two lot is a forty by one twenty-five, which gives you five thousand, uh, square feet, um, uh, ground square feet, um, total square feet of the lot. Um, this, this lot is non-conforming, it's a little bit short of that. It only has a thirty-seven, not a forty, but a thirty-seven, uh, foot width out in front. And so, uh, it makes it all the more important to have the side yard variance, uh, and, uh, in order, and by positioning the garage in the front, it allows this house to have a, a significant yard and there is no alley, so there's no other way to get into it.
Any questions from the board?
Can you talk a little bit about, oh, sorry?
Oh, go ahead, Sylvia.
Um, can you talk a little bit about the garage in the front? Are there other, how does that compare to other houses in the neighborhood?
Uh, Michael, uh, you're familiar, um?
Yeah, there, there is, there is, um, homes that have garages like that in the front. They may not, they may be in different, uh, streets sometimes, but they're definitely in, in situations like this, that's kind of more comparable with what, what's needed. So.
Because there's no alley. And actually, uh, these are older, small, maybe World War II type houses on this block. And this is the, this is the second new one, is that right?
Um, yes, it would be, I think there's one across the street from there.
Yeah. So, so this may be the trend in the future, but the old houses, uh, uh, were not designed this way back, uh, sixty or seventy years ago.
Uh, this is Zurich Esposito. I have a question about, if you could walk me through the shared driveway that currently exists, does it sit on two different, does it sit on two different properties?
I believe so. Uh, I sent a picture of it, um, uh, a Google picture, uh, you know, before Monday. Um, and you can actually see the neighbor unloading their groceries, uh, um, but, um, I have to look at a, a survey. Michael, do you know?
Um, yes, there, there's about two feet or three feet on, of the driveway on our lot, but, uh, majority is on the other lot.
But, but historically, they've shared the lot in terms of both houses using it, is that right?
Exactly.
And, and right now, the garages are in the rear yard and so they both drive through the driveway into their respective rear yards, is that right?
And it's, and it's very awkward, yes.
And so, when you move forward with this new construction, are you eliminating your two feet of that driveway?
Well, they would have full driveway on their side. They would have the full driveway, but ours would move over because we would have, I think, four feet of an easement. And then our driveway would move over. So there would be like, the, the front would be like one big apron, but then they would have their driveway, which wouldn't be affected completely going back to their garage, whereas ours would be in front on our house.
You, you would no longer need to use their driveway because you'd have your own.
Exactly.
But their driveway would sit on your property, is that correct?
No, um, well, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to start working now. There's, um, I suppose there's, there's two feet. We would have to put a divider line right there, but there would be maybe two feet that would sit on our side, I think.
So you, if, if that's a problem, you could correct it with some sort of easement or, or something, right?
Yes. I mean, our, our lot, our lot would be, our lot was, um, our house would be in four feet from our lot line.
So the only question is, some of your former cement might still be on there. They, they may still have some of your cement.
Yes.
Wait, could you repeat that, please?
So I, I'm just, uh, playing lawyer here. If, uh, Mr. Clancy now has his own driveway and no longer needs to use this formerly, uh, joint driveway, uh, I suppose they could take out the two feet of cement that's on his property or they could grant the, uh, uh, other owner, the next door neighbor, an easement to allow them to continue to use the two feet that's on their property.
Well, wouldn't by, if, if you were to remove, if you were to take away those two feet, wouldn't you be prohibiting your neighbor from accessing their garage?
I, I think we would leave that two feet of concrete there, but our, our house would be further over.
It seems like that needs to be worked out, doesn't it? I mean, how does your neighbor feel about this?
It, it wouldn't affect their, it wouldn't affect their, um, their driveway at all.
But is that something that you have already discussed with them? Do, do they know that once you establish your own separate driveway, that you're not intending to essentially cut their driveway in half?
They do, yes. I did talk to the lady next door.
Okay.
So I would, I would imagine they're happy about having their own driveway.
Yes.
Well, assuming they have it. I mean, theoretically, you could narrow that driveway, I assume by eliminating two feet of it, you might be eliminating its usefulness.
It, it, it's in the, it's in the, um, offset a lot, it wouldn't affect the home. It's in the setback, right? It's in the side yard setback.
True, but legally, you could run a fence through it.
Did you, this is Sylvia, when you submitted this, did you submit a site plan that shows where the lot line is in the driveway?
Well, we had a survey that we submitted, yeah.
Yes, it's in the survey.
The plans, all the plans that you've submitted are designed around keeping the existing shared driveway as is essentially, you just aren't using it anymore.
That, that was the plan. The commissioner raises, you know, that theoretically, a, uh, a future owner could put a fence down the middle of it. I, that was never thought of or, uh, confused of. And, um, you know, playing lawyer here, we could give them an easement so that that, that could never happen.
Yes.
And theoretically, you could put up the fence today.
Uh, I suppose, but that, that, that's never even been thought of. The idea was they'll now have their own driveway and we'll now have our own driveway. That was the whole intent of the.
Any other questions from the board?
Um, this is Sylvia again. On the, um, the new driveway, basically you're eliminating the front yard, right? So that none of that green space out front would exist. It would just be conk, as you were saying, one big apron, basically, the neighbor's, um, driveway and then your driveway into the attached garage in the front, is that correct?
To comment on that, the, the driveway is, uh, wider than it would be to access a garage in the back of the yard, but it would still exist.
Well, and also to the, whatever direction that is, the other side that the, there's still, uh, the driveway is sixteen feet, um, wide and, uh, the lot is thirty-seven. So there's still, well, at least on the, I think it's the north side, there's still, I don't know exactly how many, but a number of feet that would still have some green space. And the lot will now have a very large, open green space yard that it would not if you had the garage in the rear yard. Actually, the, the, there's a, there is a measurement, uh, thirteen feet from, um, the, uh?
The north side.
Yeah. On the north side of the lot, there's thirteen feet of green space on the, in the front. And then there's forty by thirty, or thirty-five by thirty-seven, uh, green space in the rear yard.
Rear yard.
Can you, can you roughly describe on this site plan where that side driveway is located relative to your proposed structure?
It's, it's roughly two feet, um, north of our south lot line.
Thank you.
In that five foot setback.
Thank you.
And there's, uh, approximately seven feet, just over seven feet on the neighbor's property. So I believe really they would need one foot of the driveway on this property to have an eight foot width of a driveway.
Thank you. What is?
Go ahead.
What's the, um, street parking situation generally in that block?
It's RS two and, and every house has a driveway. So, uh, Mike, you, you live there, uh, you can comment on it more than I can.
Well, I mean, like, just like you said, it's, um, just like you said, each one has a driveway to each home. But I'm, for, for us here to, to share the driveway would be very difficult because it would be so narrow to get back to the garage.
So Michael, the question is, is there street parking, uh, available on this block?
That is street.
And if you look at the Google Street View, um, there's very few cars parked on the street, but there are some cars parked between driveways on the street.
Commissioner Garcia, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, going back to the existing driveway, if you were to add another seven feet or whatever the right distance would be to have two driveways basically in parallel, can you talk about how that would impact your design or your house or?
Um, it would, it would make the house considerably more narrow, um, even just a few feet in width, um, as. Even just a few feet in width has a pretty large impact on the plan of this house. It is, as Tom stated at the beginning, the standard line in the area is 40 feet wide and this one's only 37. So it's already not the average width.
That's essentially the, the model that you had submitted for your rate of return analysis was assuming without variation, you were doing a parallel driveway. As Commissioner Garcia was positing, that's, that's where you're coming out with a, a negative essentially rate of return on the house, house's marketability.
Yes.
And, and one more point for Sylvia's question. We initially submitted a zoning administrative adjustment as more than 50% of the houses on the street have a reduced side yard. But we discovered there was a interpretation that I haven't seen before that you can't request up to a 50% yard reduction via administrative adjustment anymore. Now you can only request up to the maximum reduction that is also on the block. So therefore, we're required to seek a variance. But the point being, the character on the block is reduced side yards.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. We'll take another.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is 13720Z and 13820Z for 6720 West North Avenue.
So I'm here and we should have Victor Yakolovitch, Bill Kokalas and Phil Ryan.
I think we're still waiting on them to transition over. We're also doing 13920S. We'll do those together. That might be why we're missing somebody.
So everyone is in.
Okay, go ahead, counselor.
Thank you. My name for the record is Tom Moore. This property is the old St. Paul Federal Savings Bank that then got conglomerated through several bank conglomerations. Originally, it was, it was built in the 50s and it was, uh, that, that the, um, lead bank, the, um, you know, the central bank for a system. As it got conglomerated into other banks, it lost, it was just a, uh, they just used it as a local bank. As happened, just as a little personal privilege here, I grew up at 1905 Normandy. This bank is between Normandy and Rutherford. I lived three blocks north of here for nine, for 14 years. From kindergarten to eighth grade, I went to school at St. Giles in Oak Park, three blocks south of here. So four times a day, because we went home for lunch, I walked by this building for nine years. But it's fallen on hard times. For the last six years, it's been an empty building. And the Alderman, Alderman, Tellerferro and the community, I don't know if we have Judas, who's the North Avenue community person with us, but the, are all want to do something with this empty building. And there has been talk with the Chicago Public Libraries to possibly make a library branch and part of the down, their first floor here. The current library is at Serra Park in a, in a one room. And there's been talk and, and some discussion with some potential daycare people for maybe part of the other first floor. But the reason we're here today, what makes the property viable and able to repurpose it is to put 36 residential units on the second and third floors. And so we're asking for a variance, two variances. One, to follow the existing rear building line, alley building line up to allow a third floor and also to get, to waive the loading dock. Although, as Mr. Kokalas can tell us, there'll still be a way of, of loading. It just won't be the formal, you know, 25 foot or whatever the, the full requirement is. But it'll be near the elevators to the residences and we'll be able to handle them easily. And then the other thing we're here for today is a special use because there are only a very few little parking spaces cut out of the back, off the alley, in a part of this building. And, uh, but there is owned by the same, originally the bank and then other banks, the same seller to us, is a already landscaped lot at the corner of Oak Park and North Avenue, which is just a little, it's one property away, a little, about a half a block away. So we would want to meet our parking requirement for the 36 units offsite. And we need a special use to do that. So that's the background I asked Victor Yakolovitch to be sworn and.
Counselor, before you do that, I want to read the department's recommendation. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed offsite required accessory parking lot with 36 parking spaces to serve the proposed 36 dwelling unit building located at 6720 West North Avenue. Provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant, 531 partners, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site and the landscape plans dated April 13, 2020, prepared by Axios Architects and Consultants."
Victor, are you there? Victor Yakolovitch?
He's here. He's muted. There he is.
Hello.
Yeah, Victor. Will you tell the board who you are?
Uh, my name is Victor Yakolovitch. Our address is 1237 West Madison.
And let me, I'm going to interrupt you just to swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, counselor.
And so Victor, you are the project manager for, for the applicant. Is that right?
Yes, I am.
And you're an experienced builder and developer in your own right. Is that right?
Yes, 26 years.
And you and I went through all the criteria necessary to meet each of the things that the board has to find to grant the relief thought. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your affidavit. Is that right?
Yes, I will.
And you also submitted as an exhibit to your affidavit, an analysis of return. And you can explain to the board a little bit how you thought of it. But basically, if you weren't able to extend that, to build that third floor and to have the size units that you planned there, this project just wouldn't work at all. Is that, it, it wouldn't support the renovation and repurposing of this building. Is that right?
That is correct.
And, and so it's, it's not only would you lose money, it's not viable unless you're able to add the third floor unit and, and with sufficient depth that they go back to the alley along the same wall line as the second floor. Is that right?
Absolutely.
And you're not, we're not enlarging the, the building at all. It's all an existing building. It's the same building that the banks have used for the last 50 years. Is that right?
That is correct.
And if you were to testify, continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with the affidavit that you and I worked out and filed with the board. Is that right?
Yes.
Is Bill Kokalas on? Are you here?
He is.
Yes, I'm here.
And Bill, you're an experienced and licensed architect. Is that right?
It's correct.
Let me just interrupt that flow. Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, counselor.
And you have taken on the repurposing of this old bank building to have two floors of residential use. Is that right?
It's correct.
And you've designed it in such a way that they'll, they'll have a separate entrance and they'll have a separate, separate way of loading furniture, et cetera, into the, into the residential floors. Is that right?
That's correct.
And so in your opinion, we don't need the, the, the formal, big old commercial loading dock. Is that right?
Yeah, we, we have room for a loading berth. The only problem is that we wouldn't have the 13 feet height. We definitely have the 10, the 10 feet width and we have almost 25 feet to be able to put where those cars are. We've left some space there for a loading berth. But technically, it's not a, a real loading berth.
Okay. And you and I went through all of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the relief thought. And we put that into an affidavit. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
That's correct.
Do we have, is, is Judith, uh, did Judith stand in? Judith Alexander?
She is, yep.
Judith, are you there? Judith, are you, are you, can you speak?
She's logged in, but it looks like.
Okay. Well, she also made a written statement, which was separately submitted, I believe. And she is a person who has done a long-term lead a, a study that this area, North Avenue, will no longer really support a lot of commercial and it needs more residential to support the existing commercial. And if she were available, she testified further beyond the statement that she has also filed. And that's all the evidence we would have.
Okay. Let's get your expert on this, on the record too, for 139.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joe Ryan, are you there?
I am.
I, I tried to forget you. Um.
Counselor, before you proceed, Mr. Ryan, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
And we recognize your expertise for the record.
Thank you.
Go ahead, counselor.
Mr. Ryan, you have reviewed this situation with this 1950s bank building and the parking lot a half a block away. And you studied it and did a report that analyzed all the criteria necessary for this board to grant a special use, allowing this lot to be used as, to meet the parking requirement offsite. Is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, in that report, you found that this application meets all of those criteria and will not have a negative effect on the surrounding property. Is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your written reports that we have filed. Is that right?
I would, yes.
That's all I would have then.
Uh, Mr. Ryan, can you flesh out for us, who is the, who owns the parking lot? And what is the current use that won't be conflicting with this proposal?
Well, the parking lot is, was always part of the bank building. The bank used it as offsite parking. The, the building takes up most of the site on, on this portion, and the bank used that as their offsite parking. So the relationship will, will stay the same, except now it will provide parking for residential rather than the bank building.
Got it.
Mr. Chairman, I submitted to Victor, when that question kind of came up originally, I submitted a, a 1980s, I think, title report showing that St. Paul Federal had bought this property and, and was the owner of it. And our research shows that it's consistently turned over as each bank conglomerated. And the sellers are the owners of it. Same sellers that own the 6700 are the owners of this.
Great. Any questions from the board?
I have a question about the economic analysis. So the supportable debt, but can you talk about the rate of return for the two scenarios?
So Victor, that's you. If you, if you don't get these variances, will you talk about what your rate of return would be, if any?
It would be negative. We would have only 20 units on the property, square footage and the FAR is tremendous and huge. With only 20 residential units and potentially some commercial space, the return would be negative. So the project would die.
And what is it with the variance?
Uh, with the variance, we would have at least 8 to 12% return.
And then you also mentioned some environmental issues. If you had to demolish a building, can you, can you talk about that? What in particular?
Demolishing this building would be a tremendous task since the building goes basically two stories in ground. So the cost of demolishing the building would probably approximately be half of the cost of purchase price. So once you add those, the purchase price and the demolition of the building, even if you do a four-story building, which a current zoning would allow you, the return would not be there for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Next up is 14920S and 15020Z for 4920 North Avenue.
So this is my last case of the morning and I have two witnesses, or three witnesses, including Joe Ryan. We have Paul Cohen, Michael Cox and Joe Ryan.
Okay, we've got Mr. Ryan here. We'll give our tech support team a moment to transfer the other two. While he's doing that, I will read the department's recommendation. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the residential use below the second floor for a proposed three-story, three-dwelling unit building and a detached three-car garage with roof deck, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated January 9, 2020, prepared by MC and Associates LLC." And I think, counselor, you have both, you've got Mr. Cohen and Mr. Cox also on the line. So go ahead.
Thank you very much. So my name for the record is Thomas S. Moore. And this is a, the existing building is kind of, looks like a commercial building, but it's, it's not viable. It has, it has brick in the front. It has no windows. You really couldn't run a, a commercial enterprise out of it or any kind of retail out of it. And the back of it is all, is a older frame building. It's clearly been used as a house, although there's no special use or anything. So it's just someone sometime converted it into a house. The, the rest of the block, except the cor, except for the corners, is, is three flats and, uh, two flats and an occasional single-family house. And this proposal would fit right into it. And really, it would not be viable to have a, a commercial enterprise on the ground floor here. And the other, the variance, so that's the special use. The variance we're asking for is, this board's seen it many times. In order to have some outdoor space for the, the ground floor and basement unit, which is a family unit, the proposal is to allow the existing rear stairs, which are as of right will be there whether or not you have a garage roof deck and to be used to also access the garage roof deck. Literally, they will kiss the garage. They, and you could step across, but we don't need a bridge. But zoning still requires a variance.
um, we don't need a bridge, but, uh, zoning, um, still requires a variance to allow the transit between the existing stairs and the garage roof deck. The, uh, if we, we're not allowed to do that, uh, to get to the garage roof deck, you'd have to put a separate stairs, uh, and if you look at the, uh, site plan here, there's a, uh, without, if you're allowed to use these stairs, you have a nice 11 by 15 or so, uh, backyard, where if you had to put another duplicative extra pair of stairs along the drive, you'd be, uh, impeding upon that space, and it's duplicative and unnecessary. So that's the case. Uh, Mr. Paul Cohen, are you over here?
Yes.
Will you tell the board who you are?
Uh, Paul Cohen, at 6634 North O'Gala in Chicago.
You swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor.
And you, and you developed, um, single-family homes and three flats, uh, in the area, is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, on this particular one, uh, you and I worked out an affidavit where, wherein we addressed each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant the special use and the variance that we're requesting. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with that, is that right?
Yes.
And, um, you also did a little analysis of, uh, your return, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And, and you, um, potentially, if everything goes well and you get these variances, and if the virus hasn't destroyed the market, uh, based on other sales in the area, you're hopeful you could make a reasonable turn, return of about $250,000 on this project, is that right?
Yes, correct.
But if you were, if you were unable to get these variances and you had to have a ground floor commercial here, and, uh, we're not allowed to have the, the, uh, rear outdoor space, uh, you'd think you could lose as much as $150,000, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, that's all I have of Mr. Cohen. Um, Michael Cox, are you there?
I am.
And, uh, you designed the, um...
Let me interrupt you, Counselor, briefly, Mr. Cox, uh, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
And you're a licensed occupant, and you designed this three-flat at Mr. Cohen's request, is that right?
That's correct.
And you and I went through each of the criteria, criteria necessary for this board to grant the variance and the special use. And, uh, if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with the affidavit we filed with the board, is that right?
I would.
Um, that's all I have of, Mr. Cox, uh, Joe Ryan, are you there?
I am.
Mr. Ryan, you're still under oath, and we still recognize your expertise.
Thank you.
And Joe Ryan, you, uh, looked at this block and the other uses on the block, and, um, can you tell us what you found?
I did. Um, the block is primarily residential, and there would be no demand for commercial, uh, mid-block, uh...
Okay, and, and you did a report wherein you looked at each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the, uh, special use, allowing ground floor residential, is that right?
I did.
And, uh, as a result of your study, uh, you found that this, uh, this project, this proposal could meet each of the requirements and would not have a negative effect on the surrounding property values, is that right?
That is correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your written report that we filed, is that right?
That's correct.
Uh, that's all I have of Mr. Ryan, and that's all I have of the witnesses, other than any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you, we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much.
And next up, we have 14020S, 1905 West Belmont Avenue. And while we are getting set up, I will read the department's recommendation. "The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair-and-nail salon." Okay, Counselor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board. Uh, my name is John Pikarsky. Uh, I, along with Thomas Pikarsky, represent the petitioner, Edward Clark, and the property at 1905 West Belmont. Uh, the property is approved with a, uh, commercial first floor and three dwelling units above. Uh, the property is zoned B32, and, uh, the, uh, first floor has been previously used as a, uh, a med, a med spa. Uh, so it is perfectly set up for, for the purposes, uh, of Mr. Clark, who wants to make a salon suite out of the subject site. Uh, the, uh, property, uh, is improved, uh, has all of the, uh, equipment necessary for six salon suites. Uh, and, uh, we believe that, uh, the proposal will be, uh, removing a vacant, uh, property from the, uh, from the area and, uh, creating a viable use for the, uh, for the client. Uh, in addition to Mr. Clark, I have Mr. Joseph Ryan, who will be our real estate appraisal witness. Uh, the hours of operation for these salon suites would be, uh, Monday through Saturday, uh, nine to eight roughly, uh, and on Sunday, 10 to four. Uh, the, uh, access to the, uh, salon suites would be by, uh, uh, electronic access, and then each individual suite has its own, uh, key lock. Um, the, uh, with that, I would, uh, call, uh, Mr. Edward Clark.
Hello?
Are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
My name is Edward Clark. Uh, I own the LLC, which is based at 2724 West Belmont in Chicago.
You swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I'm sorry?
You swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, of course.
And in addition to the subject site, you have three other, uh, salon suites, is that correct?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Uh, yeah, I have prepared on your behalf, uh, an affidavit. Are you familiar with that fact?
Yes, sir, I am.
And if, if I asked you the questions that were contained in the affidavit regarding the criteria for a, uh, special use, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes, that's correct.
Does the board have any questions of Mr. Clark?
I do. Can you, um, just confirm the, um, operating hours? There was a, I think a contradiction between the report and maybe this, the, uh, the application, so I wanted, will you just confirm officially what your hours of operation will be?
Was that question for me, sir?
Yes.
The hours of operation are nine to eight, Monday through Saturday, and 10 to four on Sunday, that's when it will be open. Uh, these are salon suites, um, so the practitioners set their own hours, and typically, they do not work on Sunday or Monday.
Okay. And, um, Counselor, why don't we continue, and then I have one more question we'll come back to?
Okay. Uh, Mr. Ryan, are you available?
I am.
And Mr. Ryan, we, uh, you're still under oath, and we continue to recognize your expertise.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Ryan, at my request, uh, did, did I prepare a, or strike that at the client's request, did I prepare an affidavit on your behalf?
Yes.
And did that affidavit contain, uh, answers to the criteria necessary for a special use at the subject site?
They did.
If I asked you the same questions that appeared in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes, they would.
I have no further questions of Mr. Ryan.
Okay, um, for whoever the appropriate person is, can you talk a little bit about your community notice process, and in, in particular, I'd like to know what, uh, communication event was had with the residential units above?
Well, of, of course, uh, I'll answer the, the first part, and the, the client can answer the second part. The first part is, uh, we've given the required notice. In addition to the required notice, uh, we have notified the local alderman, uh, as to the proposed use. The, uh, I would also indicate that the previous use was for a med spa, which is substantially more intense than the proposed use. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
Yes, that's correct.
And have you, uh, talked with and notified the, uh, the, uh, three...
With the association, yes, sir. The, this unit was vacant for a couple of years. Um, I did speak with the president of the building before I bought it, and, uh, explained to him its usage, and then spoke with the other resident, residents, and made sure that they were okay with it. They were very happy to have the, have the vacant unit occupied.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, we'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, stay healthy.
Thanks, same to you. That concludes our morning call. We are going to recess until 2:00 PM for the 2:00 PM call. For any, um, applicants who are going to be participating, uh, in the 2:00 PM caller who are, uh, either on this Zoom chat or are, uh, currently live streaming, remember, you do need to begin logging in at 1:30. And with that, Commissioner Toya seconds, all in favor to recess, say aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose.
Then we are in recess until 2:00 PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, I am going to call this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals back to order. Uh, I'm going to take a roll call vote to establish quorum. Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Saul?
Here.
Commissioner Esposito? Commissioner Toya? Commissioners Esposito and Toya, are you back on, and are your mics on? Okay, I am present, we have quorum. Uh, I'm just going to go over a few things for those who are participating in the meeting. Uh, we are operating under the emergency rules, so for all applicants... Yes?
My video says the host has stopped my video for some reason.
How's that?
Okay. Thank you.
So Commissioner...
Maybe we were doing it at the same time.
Commissioner Esposito is present. Uh, again, we are operating under the emergency rules for, so for all applicants and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff time we published, you will not be able to reference them in this hearing. Please be mindful for everybody of background noise, and please mute yourself when you're not speaking. All participants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting format until your matter is called. At that time, we will transfer you over to becoming a panelist. There will be, uh, generally a short switch over in which you'll probably lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Once you are set up as a panelist, uh, I'll ask you to begin presenting your case. Uh, again, as normal, our board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone, so you don't need to manage sharing your screen. If you are an active participant in the meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem, because it will cause audio interference, so I will repeat that. If you are actively participating in this meeting, please do not watch the live stream in tandem. When you begin speaking, please identify yourself. Uh, this goes for attorneys, applicants, and board commissioners, given that we are remote, uh, we have court reporters, we can't always see who's talking at any given time. I'm going to be administering oaths for each, with each witness individually to accommodate. I'd like to remind everybody also that this is the postponed March 20th, 2020 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, so everything we will be hearing today is what was originally scheduled for March 20th, 2020. There have been no changes to the items on the agenda between then and now. The only thing that we'll be doing differently is that because of this virtual format, we're going to hear matters out of our regular order, and we are grouping them by attorney. Uh, I will make sure to call out the item numbers before we hear the items, uh, but please keep that in mind. And for those who are going to be following the votes at the conclusion of the meeting, we can have them, uh, ordered that they are heard. If an applicant has a technical issue that presents them to, uh, prevents them from presenting their case, I, we'll continue that matter until the end of, uh, this call, just to create a little bit of time to try and resolve those issues, but if that's unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Uh, we have two sets of continuances, so pursuant to the emergency rules, the applicant for board calendar number 78-20-Z and 7920Z, uh, has requested to postpone the hearing until such time as these emergency rules have been repealed, and the board can resume in-person hearings. So those two items will not be heard today and will be not, and will not be given a continuance date at this time. I'd also like to note for the record that pursuant to the emergency ru, rules, I have automatically continued board calendar numbers 15220S and 15320S until such time that the board can either resume our in-person meetings, or I feel that the virtual form, this virtual hearing format is sufficient to accommodate everyone who wishes to speak on those two matters. So again, those two items, 15220S and 15320S, will not be heard today and will not be given a continuance date at this time. We have, uh, a few withdrawals for the afternoon call, 1920S and 2020S. My understanding is that the applicant will be withdrawing those as part of the presentation. My understanding is that the applicant will be withdrawing those as part of the presentation of 1820 S, so I will let you do that formally. And for 86 20 S and 87 20 S, this is for 4301 South Packers Avenue, we have received letters requesting those to be withdrawn and so 86 20 S and 87 20 S are both withdrawn. Commissioner Toya, you are present, correct?
Wait, you got unmute me. Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. Commissioner Toya is here and has figured out how to unmute himself. So we will continue with our call. First up is 90 20 S. This is for 5601 West Madison Street. While we are getting set up, I will read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed one lane drive-through facility to serve a one-story grocery slash deli building provided the special use is issued solely to the applicant Jimmy's Food and Deli, Inc. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated April 22nd, 2020, prepared by BAU Design and Development.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, my name is Mark Kupia. I'm an attorney with offices at 77 West Washington. I represent the applicant. And I have with me today or on the call. I have on behalf of the applicant, Yasser Nasser. And also on the call, I've got Damian Babbage and his associate Amru Sayed for the architectural firm. And it's a special use. We also have Joe Ryan as our expert witness. And I believe we've got them all logged in, I hope.
Yeah, it appears everyone's there.
Good. And without, this is an application for a special use to establish a one-lane drive-through facility to serve an existing grocery store and deli building. So I think with that, I would just proceed. I'd ask you to take judicial notice of the fact that with respect to our usual criteria for special uses and as far as it being in the interest of public convenience with these virus situation that we're currently experiencing, these drive-throughs are probably more important than ever for the public convenience where the people cannot actually sit in a restaurant currently. So I just make note of that.
Yeah.
With that, I the first witness I would call and the just to point out for the board members, the building is existing. It's actually built. It's been in operation for a variety of uses over the years. It actually is situated very nicely set up for the drive-through facility. We do in fact submit a site plan, of course, and just to make sure with the original site plan, the city did have some corrections that they had suggested. So we did submit a revised site plan. I'm hoping that that's what you made reference to because we added a few things in response to the department staff recommendations. And they did sign off on the revised site plan. So we do want to proceed on that revised plan.
I'm assuming that's April 22nd.
Right, I believe so, yes.
We have it.
Okay, with that, and we did applicant did speak to local alderman. We did previously submit a letter of support from Alderman Chris Taliaferro. So we did reach out. So with that, my first witness would be Yasser Nasser. Yasser, are you on the call?
Yes, I am, sir.
And do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I swear.
Yasser, would you state your name and your business address?
My full name is Yasser Nasser. The business address is 5601 West Madison Street, Chicago, Illinois, 60644.
And Yasser, is it true that you are the president of Jimmy's Food and Deli, Inc.?
Yes, it is.
And your corporation has a lease to operate the business at this address?
Yes, I do.
And we're asking for permission for a special use for a drive-through facility for this existing business?
Correct.
And Yasser, is it true that you had signed an affidavit and we filed that affidavit on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if I continue to question you, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
In addition, Yasser, would you please tell the board, what are your proposed hours of operation for the drive-through?
Seven days a week, 24 hours.
Okay, thank you. With that, we rest on his affidavit unless the board had some specific questions.
Let's continue and get everybody on the record and then we'll come back for questions.
Good. Damian Babbage, Damian, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Do you have your associate Amru?
I believe he is not on the call.
Okay, so Damian, the project architect will be the next witness.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Counselor, please proceed.
Good. And Damian, you are the project architect of this project?
Right.
And Damian, we have prepared an affidavit for you in connection with this case today and we filed it with the board?
Yes.
Good. And if I continue to question you, Damian, would your answers be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes.
Good. And I think we'd rest on his affidavit again unless there's specific questions.
No, let's proceed.
Joe Ryan, Joe, are you there?
I am.
Good, Joe, would you state your name and your address?
Joseph Ryan, MAI, President LaSalle Appraisal Group at 9455 South Horn Avenue, Chicago, Illinois.
And Mr. Ryan, you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
We recognize your expertise. Counselor, please proceed.
Joe, did you prepare an exhibit in connection with your testimony here today?
Yes, I did.
And it has your credentials as well as other exhibits attached?
It does.
And so, Joe, you're familiar with the subject property?
I am.
Familiar with the proposed use?
Yes.
And Joe, is it in your opinion, safe to say that this special use for this drive-through will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood?
No, it will not.
And do the materials in your written reports support this conclusion?
It does.
Mr. Chairman, with that, we'd like to rest on his report.
Yes, I have a question. Can you talk through a little bit, the store itself is already 24/7. Can you talk through a little bit about the any particular security measures or what you may be doing differently staffing wise for the drive-through operation to be 24 hours?
Sure. Yasser, did you hear that question?
Yes, I did, correct.
Do you think you could address that? Are you going to do any different security because of the drive-through?
No, because it's like better because it's like why not because of the neighborhood itself, if we keep the store open 24 hours. It makes it like easier for the for the for the customers as well, like within the area. You know, they're able because it's a lot closer and stuff and it's more accessible than going anywhere further. How about the staff, it's 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 not such a big deal.
So Yasser, are you saying that security wise, it's actually better to be open 24 hours?
Yeah, it's a lot better to keep it 24 hours than closing it down and then worrying about the the worker himself when he's locking up and heading to his vehicle and stuff like that.
So it's more secure to have an employee on the premises 24 hours a day?
Yes.
So no special security precautions needed for the drive-through other than what you now have for the restaurant?
Yeah.
Well, can you talk through what you, what is your staffing right now at 2:00 in the morning without the drive-through?
Yasser.
Without the drive-through, it's only it's only just one person. We have, that just works a nice shift for himself.
And we'll be manning both the drive-through and the rest of the store?
Yes.
And are you selling liquor at this location or do you have any plans to sell liquor at this location?
No, 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 no liquor.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
On one of the pictures, this is Sylvia Garcia. One of the pictures included, there's a sign that says drive-through. Were you operating a drive-through and were cited and had to shut down to get the permit or did something happen? Where you were previously operating a drive-through?
If I could give a a discussion with the owner of the property, I was told that previously this building, which is an existing older building, was used for a fast food restaurant, maybe a church's chicken. And the building is located on-site purposely to provide for a drive-through. It may have in fact even previously had a service window in the past. But it's not had continuous restaurant use and we were never able to find a special use for any previous previous drive-through. So the building is existing, the layout is existing. We are coming to you for fresh new permission for to establish a drive-through and get a special use.
Okay, because the picture that we're showing right now on the screen, if you look underneath where it says food and deli, there's a sign that says drive-through with an arrow. So I was just curious about the history of what of a drive-through, if there had been any complaints or issues with that in the past.
Actually, it was forward to be a letter from the city noting that they had done a search and could not find a special use for this drive-through and suggested that we apply and get a special use for the drive-through. And after they received that letter from the city, they hired an architect, drew the plan and we filed the application for the special use.
Okay, and there were no complaints or anything that prompted that search for the special use?
They didn't, they didn't explain any complaints. The operator was not aware of any complaints. As soon as they got the letter from the city, they searched out and hired an architect, drew the plan and we filed the application. And I've had no, we certainly did our notification pre-application and you did your notice of the meeting. And I've had no, no phone calls on this at all. That's one of the reasons we checked with the alderman's office to see if you know, he had a complaint or anyone had complained to him. So we're not aware of any complaints. Other than the letter from the city.
Can you clarify, so it the it's been open roughly two years, correct?
Yasser, how how long this business been open?
It's been like going on three years now.
Three years. And of that three years, how long was it actually operating the drive-through already before the city gave you notice?
No, it wasn't operating for long. It was like mainly like inside with operating.
But how 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 much of that time did you also have the drive-through operating?
It was not long at all. It was probably like probably like a year, I think.
In the beginning year, like when you started the business?
Yeah.
Or you?
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question. I got a couple of questions. So you said there's no liquor license and you don't plan on trying to apply for a liquor license, do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. Question number two, obviously, drive-through 24/7. Is it, are you going to allow people to walk up to that drive-through? Are you going to allow people to ride a bike up to that drive-through or is it only you have to be in a car?
You have to be in a car mainly.
Okay, just just because I've seen some people walk up and, you know, ride a bike up and stuff. So I just wanna. You don't want to wreck it, so you're hard.
Okay.
Alright.
Especially with the situation how it is now, we need it.
Commissioner Toya, any further questions?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
If if we made it a condition of the special use that you not sell liquor without coming back to get an amendment, it sounds like that would not be an issue for you?
Yeah, that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is 55 20 Z for 901 West 129th Place.
Chairman, I don't see Joseph Caldwell in the list.
I saw him earlier.
He's there. He's with Kareem Musawer.
Oh, okay. Victor, that's case number 26 you have labeled it. It's not 55.
I think we have it under a separate, we had it at one point under two different entries, I think.
So. Just bring in Kareem Musawer.
Yeah, Mr. Musawer is Mr. Caldwell with you in person?
Mr. Musawer, you have to unmute yourself to speak, yes.
Can you hear us now?
You've got two.
I got. Okay, can you hear us now?
Yeah, but you've got, you're logged in, I think.
I think you have, you're logged in from two devices. Can you please turn off one device, speakers from one device?
Keep the apple on and the turn the other off.
Yeah, I picked for you.
Okay.
Does this work for you?
I'm going to promote him to panelist. I think he's the guy.
Okay. Okay. And you have Mr. Caldwell with you? Mr. Musawer, do you have Mr. Caldwell with you?
We got a link for him.
He needs to call.
Can you hear me? Okay, we're going to come back to this one at the end of the call. Next up is 26 20 Z for 916 West Webster Avenue.
We have them all here, Jim.
Counselor, it looks like you've got your witnesses queued up. If you're ready to start.
Property that is both a lot is both short and the width is small.
Counselor, can you start at the beginning? Your mic was off when you began.
I'm very sorry. My name is Tom Moore and can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This lot is both short and the width is also small. And so we're asking for a side yard variance. It's the lot is 24 feet wide. We should, under the rules, we would have a side yard of four feet, eight inches. We're asking to reduce it to two feet on each side, so eight inches smaller, which will allow us to have the same size room as all of the 25-foot lots in the area. And we're also asking to have garage roof deck, which a majority of the houses on the block do have. And again, it's with a set of right stairs and that would tip the garage. And so those are the variances we're requesting. And my first witness would be Alan Karabbar. Alan, are you there?
Yes, sir.
And would you tell the board who you are and how you're related to this case?
Before you do that, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, sir. My name, my name is Alan Karabbar. I'm a member of Back Home Development Partners and we're the development team who owns the property and plans to redevelop it.
And why, tell the board why you need these variances?
Well, as you noted, we've got two hardships. We've got a short 115-foot lot and a narrow 24-foot lot. To overcome those shortcomings, we we need eight inches of extra width. Uh to overcome those shortcomings, we uh we needed eight inches of extra width. So we're the same as a twenty five foot. And uh the second variance is just uh to access the legal space above our garage, uh which is uh for the garage rooftop deck, uh which again, uh five of our neighbors enjoy, including both neighbors to the east and west.
And uh and the uh west and the east side, um if you take the eight inches off there, how far will the next building to the east be?
Uh as proposed, the next building would be seven feet away.
Okay. And uh you've had a community meeting and you have letters from the property owners to the east, at least two of them in support. And we have a letter from the alderman saying she has no objection. Is that right?
That's correct.
Um and you and I worked out a affidavit uh going through each of the criteria necessary for the board to grant this these variances. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with it. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And uh next, I'd like to uh Luke Bakalar.
Yep.
Uh Luke, will you tell the board how you're related to this property?
Sure, uh I'm also.
Will you do that? Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do, yes.
Go ahead.
Tell tell them how you're related.
Sure, uh I'm also a partner with Back Home Development and um in addition to that, I have my real estate license with that properties and do uh residential sales.
Okay. And so you're you're Alan's partner, is that right?
Correct.
And what you were going to address and you uh attached um to your own affidavit um was the uh the reasonable return and why you need this variance in order to get a reasonable return, is that right?
Correct, yep.
Would you explain uh based on your expertise as a uh real estate salesperson and a developer in the area, why uh you cannot get a reasonable return without these variances?
Sure, not to oversimplify it, but essentially without the garage deck access and without um bedroom dimensions in excess of ten feet, we would uh we fall short of the competitive units essentially. Uh and our our ultimate sales prices would suffer as a result, uh which plays into the reasonable return.
And you in your affidavit, you actually gave two pages of comparable sales and the time time it took to sell them to demonstrate uh the conclusions you just gave us, is that right?
Uh with regards to the garage deck, that's correct. Yeah, the um there was only one unit I could find that was uh that was new construction that did not have a garage deck and that unit uh languished on the market more than five times the average days on market for those units that had sold.
Um and your experience is similar. If you, if the bedroom is smaller than ten feet, it it becomes uh difficult to sell as well, is that right?
Correct.
Okay, and you and I worked out an affidavit to address each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant these variances. And if you were to continue to testify, would you testify consistently with your affidavit and your analysis that was attached to it?
I would.
Uh is Chris Dossi there?
Yes.
Chris, you're a licensed architect, is that right?
Do you want to be sworn in first?
Yes, you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
You're a licensed architect, is that right?
Yes, I am.
And you designed this property um uh given the uh fact that it's a short and a a uh a slim lot, um and that created certain difficulties for you, is that right?
Correct.
And uh you and I uh went through each of the criteria necessary for this board to grant the variances requested. And if you were to continue to testify, you'd testify consistently with your affidavit, is that right?
It's correct.
Uh that's the the um substance of our case.
Can you clarify for me the um the affidavit we have, and I think from what you described, the the two partners on on your witness list are both for Back Homes Development Partners LLC. Can you just clarify what the relationship is between that entity and what we have as the applicant, which is the Webster nine fourteen LLC entity?
Sure, I'll take that on. Uh Back Home Development Partners LLC uh wholly owns Webster nine fourteen LLC. They're the one hundred percent member.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
I apologize. This is the court reporter. Who was that speaking?
Uh that was Alan Carabar.
Thank you, sir.
I got a few questions.
Go ahead.
All right. So one, you said you got a letter from the alderman. I always follow up with this question. I thought you would know this, uh but did you, because I know in Lincoln Park, they have block clubs and neighborhood groups. Did you get a letter or did you have any communication with the block club or the neighborhood group on Webster Street in Lincoln Park?
Yeah, so as I said, we have uh two letters, which we have filed and which I did file before Monday uh from the neighbors to the east. Uh we had a community meeting at the DePaul um uh community group. Uh they they uh sent a letter saying, it's it's a long story, uh but uh basically they sent a letter saying they don't support it. They did not say they object or um uh are objecting or against it. Uh they just said uh because of some issues that they did not uh politically want to support it. However, the alderman um who got two continuances uh on this case uh and was intimately involved in discussions um uh with all of the neighbors. Um and my client did everything that she asked him to do with regard to the neighbors in the neighborhood. And as a result, uh she has uh sent a letter saying that she has no objection.
Okay, so let me follow up on that. Again, we respect what the aldermen have to say in their wards, but the aldermen don't vote on this board. I think you know that. So that's number one. We do respect what they have to say. But we, and I know the mayor as well, likes to hear what the neighborhood groups have to say and what the block but clubs have to say. Could you tell me who the block club or the neighborhood group that wrote they did not support this?
They didn't, they did not say they didn't support it. They did not say that. They said that they uh
Well, if I could see the letter, then I would know what they say.
The letter, the letter was on.
Let me finish. And if you would have told us this in your, when you were testifying, how you added in that the alderman supported this, you should have said at that time, yeah, but we got some neighborhood groups that are not on board. That's why I'm not real happy right now. So go on.
Okay, so here here's here's the truth of the situation. There is one neighbor who um at one time wanted to buy this property or was offered to buy this property. There was one neighbor who was against it. And so when we went to the community group, uh they discussed with that neighbor, gee, this is no big deal. Uh it's a short lot in the side yard. And then the committee, uh it looked like they're gonna support it. They, at the committee meeting, they said, gee, this is no big deal. When they got to the board, the board said, well, there's this one neighbor who who doesn't support it, so uh we don't want to affirmatively support it. And that's what the letter says, which the letter is on file. It does, it does not say they oppose it. It does not say they object to it. It just says they don't affirmatively support it.
All right, so you're you're saying they don't support it. So again, I had the letter in front of me, then I would know what it says, but I don't have the letter in front of me. So they don't support it. Now, let me ask this question. Who is the neighborhood group? Could I have the name?
Yeah, sure, of course. It's it's Pedware Bledski and the the DePaul.
Um it's Sheffield Neighbors.
Yeah, Sheffield Neighbors, I'm sorry.
All right, I just wish that you would have said this upfront when you, when you got that in there. The alderman supported this, but you didn't tell us that Sheffield Neighbors quote unquote did not, did not oppose. I got it. But did not support it. So I wish in the future, uh chairman, you know, we should make sure that uh, you know, when we hear that, you know, instead of me digging, you know what I mean? We would never known that Sheffield Neighbors did not support this if I didn't do some digging here.
Let me clarify everybody on the record. So the alderman and counselor, I'm gonna ask you to confirm, the alderman is not in support of it. The alderman gave a letter that was not objecting to it, correct?
That is correct. And and.
With respect to the letters, I believe we have them. They were submitted in a follow-up round, but prior to our deadline. So you should have.
Yeah. And 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 uh Mr. Toya, I in no way want want to mislead you. Um when you go to these community meetings, uh occasionally you get someone who you, no matter what you do, you can't make happy. And the uh the community groups and the aldermen um uh talked extensively to this person and they didn't want to affirmatively be against them, but they did not oppose uh the request. Uh they thought they were reasonable.
Yeah, it's just usually, I mean, I think you know, counselor, usually when you bring up the alderman, I like to know what the neighborhood group or the block club have to say. That's all. I mean, I've been doing this for years, so that's why I was like taking back a little bit.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And I understand, but in this case, the alderman was arbitrating with this neighbor and was very involved. So it, she really in in many ways was more than just being the uninterested alderman. She was involved in this neighbor who could not uh who was not happy, no matter what.
All right. And my second question was, uh the gentleman said that it's a short lot, which I get. So my next question is, when people say short lots, I always follow up. Are they short? Is it, is this the only piece of property that's a short lot or are all the lots on that street short lots? Could you explain that to me, please?
I'll I'll answer that, Tom. Uh the that that inside uh side of the block is a hundred and fifteen feet. Uh and uh if you look at our side setback survey, uh you can see that uh nearly all of the neighbors have uh setback accommodations to deal with the hardships uh that we're now dealing with as well. Uh you could, as you can see on what's posted there, pretty much everyone's a zero off line or less than a foot.
So, all right, that answers my question. Thank you. I'm done, chairman. I have no more questions.
Any other questions from the board?
This is Sylvia um Garcia. So going back to the neighbor question, is the the neighbor that was opposed, is that the neighbor directly to the west? Or what kind of interaction have you had with a neighbor to the west?
Alan, do you want to answer? You want me to?
Uh sure, yeah. Uh the neighbor to the west uh opposed. Uh we actually met him for the first time at the uh neighborhood meeting. Sorry, I'm looking here. Uh and uh they were fairly hostile and uh you know, they purchased their property last year uh in the summer. And uh it became apparent that I don't think they thought it was gonna be developed so quickly. Uh the complaints were actually not about our variance because it's on the other side of the property. It doesn't affect them really. Uh it was more about uh should we down zone the neighborhood? Are three? How can they build three stories? How can they not build a single family home? Uh it's not clear what their uh, you know, what they knew or what they thought when they purchased their property. Uh and subsequently, since then, uh as they're on the property line, they needed access to our property uh to do some repairs and we've accommodated that. And uh actually, this week uh part of their rear deck is on our property. And uh the alderman has been part of this, has reached out to us and asked us to accommodate them on that. So we're gonna be working with their title company to provide a permanent easement for them uh to allow their deck to remain on our property. And we're essentially gonna develop around it. Uh so we've accommodated uh these neighbors as much as we possibly could. And I think beyond what what's actually normal.
Okay, that's helpful to understand. And you you are the developer for the developed nine fourteen and nine twelve next door? Is that correct?
Nine ten and nine twelve, correct.
Nine ten and nine twelve. So you developed the two properties next door. And is the plan to develop this in a similar fashion to those that were newly developed there?
Correct.
Okay, so it's kind of like those three will look similar in fashion. And then the letters from the neighbors in support are folks that have moved into that new development that you constructed there. Um worried about the development, is that correct?
The the first letter is actually from uh nine oh eight. Uh and the second letter is from us because when this file was opened uh like God knows how many months ago, uh we didn't have any owners in there.
Okay, so it's from the from the development company from the building next door and then nine oh eight, a little bit further down the block.
It's the next, it's the next neighbor over to the east.
Um can you talk a little bit about what, I know you put this in your um finding of fact, but just talk through um what would be the case if the variance was denied? What, how would that impact the development? What would that look like? Um I know we talked a little bit about the size of the rooms and the roof deck, but like if you did a single family home or a different, can you talk a little bit about the economic?
Uh in economic terms, it's it's actually not feasible. Uh we actually tried to sell this land. Uh we originally just wanted to redevelop nine ten and nine twelve. Uh and we had this on the market for eight months. We had dropped the price. Uh I'm sorry, for eleven months. And after eight months, we dropped the price and would have actually lost money on it. Uh we looked at it as a single family home and uh it it's not uh as beautiful as Webster is, uh the preferences around there is to be on the uh north south streets like Fremont and Dayton. And it being undersized, uh the people who are looking to live there are looking for fifty two hundred square foot homes, not whatever the order of this is, more like four thousand. Uh so it was not economically feasible. We would prefer to do a single family home in some sense, uh but it wasn't feasible. And I'll just add, a- as you can see from our returns, and Luke can speak more to this, uh with the variances, we're we're at five point seven percent, I believe, uh return.
Would you? Can it, can I, do you want me to speak more on it or uh do you have any additional questions?
Sure, that'd be helpful.
Um sh- sure. Uh I guess it's it's essentially in the affidavit, but um you know, without the variances that we're requesting, uh as I said previously, we would fall short of the competition and there's a price to pay for that. Um I couldn't find out of thirty four total new construction units within the last year within a certain geography, any of them that had bedroom dimensions under ten feet. We would be the anomaly. Uh additionally, out of seventeen new construction duplex downs, I couldn't find one uh that had sold uh without a garage deck. We would be the anomaly. So uh you know, we put best guess reductions in sales prices against those deficiencies. And that's how we arrived at our our gross profit expectations.
Can you identify yourself one more time? I just want to make sure our court reporter has it.
My name?
Yeah.
Uh Luke Bakalar.
Commissioner, are you done with your questions?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration. Next up is sixty five twenty Z for ten forty four West Polk Street.
You're all in, chairman.
Okay, uh counselor, you've got uh Frank King and a Sam Coraja.
Yes, thank you.
Who that we're waiting for? Is he with somebody else?
No, that's it.
That's it. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. My name for the record is Tom Moore. Uh this is a property um on Polk Street. Uh it's a duplex up and a duplex down. And uh it's it will be a condominium. The duplex down is a family unit and it has a right to the garage roof deck. Uh like other cases that you've had before you, um the uh as of right stairs kiss the garage in the back. And um we'd like a variance uh to be able to access the garage roof deck, which uh could be as of right, but uh and there's not a, there's no bridge necessary here, but we still need the variance to get to it. Um the uh when we filed, Mr. Frank King, who was on the uh call uh with the developer and um he was having trouble selling it because he didn't have any outdoor space. In the interim, uh a young family, uh Johnny Vu and his wife Michelle bought the property. Uh they had a contingency, uh and there's an escrow that there be the outdoor space. Um and uh they were, they had uh signed in and were going to be witnesses as well. Uh but they're literally actually having a baby today. today. So they're not available. But Mr. Kang, will you tell the board who you are?
Yes, this is Frank Kang. Sorry.
Go ahead.
You swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Go ahead, Counselor.
And you were the developer of this property, is that right?
Yes.
And since we filed this case, you've sold the property to a young family, is that right?
Sorry, can you say again, please?
Since we filed this case, you sold the property to a young family, is that right?
Yes.
And they were willing to purchase the property if they could have some outdoor space, is that right?
Yeah, they put it in contingency.
And so, the, without the, without this variance, there would be no outdoor space in the back, is that right?
Yes.
And you and I went through a affidavit where we addressed all of the criteria necessary for the board to grant the variance you've requested, is that right?
Yes.
And if you were to testify, testify consistently with it, is that right?
Yes.
That's all I have for Mr. Kang. Is, Sam, are you there? Sam Tadara, are you there?
If you are speaking, you need to unmute a mic or speak closer to the mic.
I talked to him an hour ago, so I know, and he had said he had logged in.
He's logged in. Not hearing anything you're saying. What's his relationship to the application?
He's the architect. And he does have an affidavit on the file.
We'll give him a moment, maybe, to see if he can chime in. While he's doing that, can you clarify for me when the property was built?
Mr. Kang, you built this property before we filed this request, is that right?
Yes. This property, constructing, started, started construction in August 2017 and finished construction in May 2019. So we put this unit on the market in June 7, 2019.
And you weren't having any luck selling it. And one of the things you learned when buyers would come is they'd like some outdoor space, is that right?
Yeah, they, they're required to have outdoor space. If you don't have, have difficulty to sell the unit. That's why, in the end of the December, we talked to attorney, Tom, regarding the variance for the rooftop deck.
So originally, you weren't going to put the outdoor space, but after you had interaction with the market, you learned that it would be a good way to enhance your ability to sell it, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Any questions from the board?
You said you sold the unit in the interim. So I'm curious, how much is being held back until this issue is resolved? Or what is the arrangement with the family that bought the unit, depending on the outcome of this proceeding?
Mr. Kang, do you understand the question?
Not quite. Can you say again, please?
So you put, you created a contingency, you created an escrow
Yes.
to kind of ensure that you would follow through and try your best to get this variance, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
The commissioner is asking, how much was the contingency? How much was the escrow?
It's 25,000.
Okay. And it's not going to cost anywhere near that to build out the garage roof deck, is that right?
No, the construction fee is not that much.
But, but the main point there is to give you an incentive to get it done, is that right?
Yes.
And after it's done, whatever is it used, you would get back, is that right?
Yes.
This is Zurich Esposito.
Can I, sorry, can I just finish? So in your, in your rate of a turn analysis, if I'm reading this correctly, you're saying the value of this, the outdoor space is 120,000, but it seems to only be 25,000. So can you just explain that?
Yeah. And before that, it's on sale. So it's, it's on the market for like 208 days. And we keep drop the price from 800 to 719 and to 760. So we find out it's really, really hard to sell it with the price we expected. So, so that's why we keep changing the number. And in June, yeah, we finally have the buyer coming to see. So they are, they are hoping, you know, they can have outdoor space. But the closing day is in April. So in April, I was, you know, still cannot get a variance, you know, the certificate of the variance. So this is why we think about putting some kind of escrow.
And then last question on this point, how much did you sell it for? How much did you end up selling it for?
So, what do we have? Okay, is 687. So including the escrow, it's going to be 712,000. So it's still actually lower than what we expect. But at least we can get the things done. And the family would be happy if we have outdoor space for them.
And if I could add, we've had many cases where, and had I, had we known that the young family that now has purchased it, we would have made them the applicants. And indeed, we added them and they did an EBS and they did an affidavit, which you have. And what they would say, what people who are going to live there often say, is that it's not about making money or return, it's about a viable place for them to live. And so we added them as, you know, a co-applicant, really. We apply, we gave the EBS and their affidavit, and they gave a letter for Mr. Kang to be the spokesman here. And they would have been on the call. They were listed as people on the call, but they actually are having a baby today.
Thank you.
This is Zurich Esposito. May I ask, are any of, do any of the other neighboring properties have usable garage roof decks similar to the one you would have?
If I can answer that, I submitted pictures last Friday, which you have and should be available to you, of a very elaborate garage roof deck on a property immediately next door. It's an old church, and they added a huge garage roof deck. And if you, the picture I gave you actually shows our roof deck and that, that one, you can see them both. You can see how elaborate the one next door.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is 1820S for 1809 South Racine Avenue. While we are getting set up, I will read the department's recommendation. Technically, this is 1819 and 20. And Counselor, I'll let you formally make your withdrawal request. But in the interim, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed 84-seat religious assembly facility, provided the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September 21st, 2018, prepared by ALO Architecture Design.
We're all in for this case, Chairman.
We cannot hear you effectively.
Mr. Pikarski, you have to move closer to your mic. I think you're too far away.
Are you in the same room with, with, are you logged in two different ways? Or are you listening to the live stream at the same time? Okay.
Are we okay now?
Perfect.
Wonderful. Sorry. Some of us are more challenged than others. My name is John Pikarski. I, along with Thomas Pikarski, represent the Pilson Church. Our office is at 55 West Monroe Street. And this afternoon, we have with us Pastor Douglas Harris and Appraiser Joseph Ryan. Very interesting. First of all, just as, I would make a motion to withdraw 19-20-S and 20-20-Z, as they are irrelevant. The zoning department had opined that we will not be required to provide parking.
Excellent. We will consider those both withdrawn.
Now, we are seeking a special use to establish an 84-seat religious assembly at the location. The property is zoned B32. It measures 25 by 125. This site, and the building is older than anybody in the hearing distance. It was built in, I believe, 1892 as a bank. A church, the Bethesda Christian Church, purchased the property in 1961. And we know that because Mrs. Mary Gonzalez-Kennig, the former commissioner of the mayor's office of employment and training, granted us an affidavit, a copy of which, along with supporting materials, you have. Mrs. Kennig of firsthand knowledge knows that this was a church, converted to a church in 1961, because her father was the pastor. She was the pianist, as well as a Sunday school teacher. In 19, or 2017, the property was deeded to the Pilson Church or its corporation, and has been continuously used. However, at some point in time, in the not-too-past, distant past, it was decided to make improvements to the interior of the building. We, my client, wants to rehab the building, to bring it up to both electrical and plumbing code, as well as to create an ADA compliant bathroom, and to carve out out of the existing space, a classroom. The total budget is about $250,000. I have with me this afternoon Douglas Harris and Joseph Ryan. I have prepared affidavits on behalf of both of them, but I think the affidavit of Mrs. Gonzalez-Kennig is probably the most pertinent of the materials in your file. With that, I would call Doug Harris. Doug, are you there?
You have to unmute yourself.
There we go. Unmute, unmute. Got it.
Do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Doug, on your behalf, did I prepare and file an affidavit?
Yes, you did.
And if I ask you those questions, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
Yes.
Okay, fine. I have no further questions of Doug Harris. I would call Joseph Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Ryan, you are still under oath, and we still recognize your expertise.
Thank you, Chairman.
Now, are you familiar with the subject site at 1809 South Racine?
I am.
And have you, in addition to preparing a full-blown report, examined the subject site?
I have.
And at the request of my client, I prepared an affidavit on your behalf. Are you familiar with that affidavit?
Yes, I am.
And if I ask you the questions that appear in the affidavit, would your answers be the same or substantially similar?
They would be the same.
Fine. I have no further questions of Mr. Ryan. Does the board?
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you. We'll take it under consideration.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
We're going to go back to 5520Z with Mr. Musawer and Mr. Caldwell. Right this end. Okay, Mr. Musawer, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear us?
You can. And you have Mr. Caldwell with you?
I do.
Perfect. Okay. Why don't you, well, while you're both there, do you swear to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Why don't you talk us through what you're trying to do with this application?
Well, this is Kareem Musawer. So Mr. Caldwell applied for a variation in order to build in addition to an existing single-family residence to make a two-dwelling development on his lot. And this application is to reduce the front yard and the eastern west side yards in order for a fence that he's proposed from the, along the side of the properties, which would be a solid six-foot fence. And then he has a rear yard variation. And he has a rear two-story addition on the property, which backs up into which backs up into the Little Calumet River, the the lot itself, not the addition. So, Mr. Caldwell's been working on this property for about five years. There was a previous architect who did not complete the job. And then he asked me to help him. I introduced him to another set of architects who are in the process of getting the building permit. And in that process, we, which it was that process which brought us here.
Is it just? So is it just for the fence?
It's it's not just for the fence. There's also a garage, a three-car garage addition behind the existing single-family, which will be along, which would, it's not there now, but it would be along the east side lot line.
The east side, okay. And can you talk through the hardship?
Well, the the issue that he spoke to me about was the fact that he wanted to make an addition that would not be vertical, but would be horizontal since his lot is so deep. And the the garages are necessary in order to take the vehicles off the public street, of course. And and the design of the property being so far back from the front lot line, he didn't realize that there would be an issue with that.
Say that last part again for me.
Yeah, the the design of the of the garage, the design of the addition and the garage is very far back from the front lot line. And in order to accommodate the the square footage he was looking for in his home, he needed to get those garages in there and and building behind it.
Can you? So, Mr. Caldwell, can I have you chime in as well? What's what's the? If you don't get these variations, what is the consequence here?
The consequence on the garage, the garage wouldn't be, I would maybe get that the garage to the east side in there. That's why I need to get right on the property line. And it fits butts it. The new brick wall fence busts the garage.
And did you? Have you already done work for this conversion?
Yes, we've gone, we've gone through. It's been a zoning change. We've had it zone from a from a R to a to a B two-three now. So we've done a lot already. Since now we want to build a garage onto this now. And we had the original architect was Ron Gardner. Well, you know, I only know about Ron Gardner. He was the worst architect on the planet. And so we had to go back. And this is where this has been the delay.
And sort of just timeline this out for me. So you you did work before the zoning change? Did you get cited? Or you you went through the zoning change with the architect, then started the work and then?
Part of this place was up when we first got it. And then we then we finished it. And then it came while this architect, this Ron Gardner was a he was he was so bad. When I say bad, he tried to take the zone. He tried to take these plans through forty-seven to Pulaski. He was running so much game on us for a long time. You cannot take drawings, a full set of drawings through Pulaski, forty-seven Pulaski, but he had something going with guys all over. And so he allowed us to build this thing. And then we had such of a problem. I'm sure he had a lot of problems in the city. I've heard since then.
Okay. General, I confess, I'm still a little bit confused about what you're attempting to do. So why don't we? Let's start in the beginning. I'm trying to get to a clear sense of what is it specifically that the variations you're requesting will allow you to do? And absent those variations, what is the the specific consequence? What is it that prevents you from accomplishing what you're trying to do differently? What is it that that requires the variation to prevent you from from losing some investment or not being able to to get a reasonable rate of return on what you've been doing so far?
The let's go. The front yard and the east and west side variations are for a a proposed six-foot fence. Now, that without that, then the fence would have to be lowered to a five-foot fence.
And why do we? Why? What's the relevance of the fence being five foot versus six foot?
Not that much. It just is look aesthetic. It's gonna look good. It's on the river. And this development is very unique. Unique in its own. As a matter of fact, it was in the great Chicago business about three weeks ago. They showed this house as some of the most unique homes in Chicago. And this was one of them.
Already, right? You built you built it at six feet.
No, the fence is not up. The fence is not up all around it. We want to put that up. That's what we that's what we're here for, for this fence to be built. And close the close the whole home, the whole yard in with the house.
This is Sylvia Garcia. So in in the pictures, there's like a red fence on the eastern west side and then like a black iron fence on the front.
In the front. That's in the front. Right. That's in the front.
The fence that you're talking about building is not that red fence?
No, we're replacing that with a brick fence. Right. That's what we want to place.
Okay. And so it would be a two-foot brick fence or six-foot brick fence. And you're saying you need that to enclose the home. So would you have that in the front as well or just on the sides?
I have I have it in the front, just to the driveway. Then I have a wrought iron gate. And then where the front house, where the new, the breezeway is, you see on the on the east side, on the west side of the house, when you get to the breezeway going, going, I guess, south of that will be wrought iron. Anything behind, anything behind the breezeway, anything behind the the new addition going to the water, all that would be wrought iron.
So wait, when you talk about on the, you lost me on the breezeway. So when I look at the pictures, there's kind of the building in front and then
attachment, attachment up top.
Are we looking at the same thing?
There's a breeze. There's a proposed breezeway along the west side of the existing single-family.
On the west side. So if I'm looking at the front of the house, the west is to the left?
To the right.
To the right. Okay, so two-story brown brick building next door.
Yes, right, right.
Got it. And so there'd be a breezeway along that property line?
Right. Not not along the property line itself. It's going to be set up, set back two feet from the property.
Two feet from the property line. Okay. And so you'd have the brick fence to that breezeway. And then you're saying you'd have wrought iron fence the rest of the way. And this whole thing?
Where the breezeway starts, always to to the other house, we all are wrought iron, right?
Got it.
Only the only thing you'd be able to see from the front, only the ability to see from visual from you driving by, you see anything back behind that you would not see, it'd be all in right three feet.
And then?
So, excuse me, Ms. Sylvia Garcia, the breezeway is actually proposed to be set back three feet from the west side lot line.
Three feet from the west side spot?
Yes.
And so you currently have the house. You don't have the breezeway, but in these pictures, then I see there's like another back building.
That's the other house, right.
From the east side. So there's a second house on this property?
Right.
Okay, so any pictures? I don't know if you guys can see the the live stream, but the so there's, it looks like there's the driveway and then you have the back building. And then there's a like a structure in black that looks like it's one story?
Yeah, it's not just about a wall. It's about a wall.
Oh, that's a wall.
It's a wood, wood wall, right.
And the black structure is on the west side of the property.
On the west side. So that's on the side where you would have the breezeway?
Correct.
Okay. And so you're the fence that you're building, is it similar brick to the build, the outbuilding itself or the?
Similar to the one, right, right. Similar to the one in front, yes.
Similar to the one in the front. Okay. And so for the variance, the front yard variance and the two side variances are related to this brick wall, basically, that you're putting around the house to enclose it?
Yes.
And then you mentioned that the house backs up to the river? Is there a fence in the back?
No fence, no fence to the, not underwater, no. Well, there's a short three-foot fence along there, protection fence along the around the river itself, yes.
Okay, so I'm just going through the variances again. So the variant, front variance, east and west are the fence. But it says it's about the, so where does the parking come in?
So the parking is behind the, it lines up with that black building and the white white wall. That wall will actually open up to the garage. That's where the garage is going to be placed.
Across the back. East to west, across the back.
East to west from the black structure to the east side lot line.
Okay, can you see this floor, this site plan?
Yes.
So the, just work run, going from maybe left to right. So we've got the river.
It is spiral staircase?
Yes.
Okay, just to the right of spiral staircase, that 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 long square there, new garage proposal. You see the breezeway going at the top, going to adjacent to the next house, the front house.
And then on the other side of the garage is the second house, the other existing structure?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, at least now I know where I am on the map. I don't know. I don't know if we've resolved the need for the variance, but now, thank you. That's what was really helpful because now I understand the layout of what's happening.
So the variances, the the front setback is for your solid brick fence in the front?
Yes.
Okay. And then the east side and the west side setbacks are for the garage?
No, the 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 west side setback is for another solid brick fence.
Relation of the front into the side up near that breezeway before it turns into the wrought iron fence.
Correct, right.
And is the breezeway also in that setback on the west side? Because you said it'd be three feet back and it looks like the west setback is five feet. And you're asking to move it to zero. So it would be the breezeway.
On the west side is only going to be the wrought iron fence to the where the breezeway starts. And then from that part, it will be wrought iron from the from, because once you to the street, to the to the, I guess, to the, where did you go there?
You're talking about a wall going along.
Right, right, right. You're going around the front and it stops at the beginning of the breezeway. Then it'll go wrought iron all the way back to the other house, the rear home.
Right. But then is the breezeway itself in the west side setback? Does that also trigger? So if you didn't have a fence or anything, is the is the breezeway in the?
The west side setback requirement would be five feet. So it would be a three-foot
setback.
It would have a three foot instead of a five foot setback.
Okay, so that would be another component of the west side setback if you didn't have the fence, but you needed it zero because of the fence.
Yes.
Okay. And then is the park, is the garage? Because it looks like it basically goes almost from lot line on the east side to a few feet back on the west side. Is that also encroaching on the east and west?
Only the only the east side lot line, the the garage being a permitted obstruction in the rear, except for the, except for the fact that this rear is so deep that you're still in the side yard way back there. So the the east side would, the garage on the east side lot line would be a violation of the setback requirement. And on the west side lot line, it would line up with the breezeway at three feet.
Got it. Okay, so you need the setbacks basically for the fence in the front, but then also for the breezeway in the garage in the back?
That's right.
Wait. Let me just interrupt. So the, for the garage, you only need the east side setback though, right?
Right.
Okay, so the front and the west side setbacks are for the solid brick fence?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then the wrought iron fence that takes over from the solid brick is under six feet, etc. You don't need anything for that?
Right.
Okay.
Can I ask, this is Zurich Esposito, the solid brick fence, both, how does it, how does its height compare to the red fence that Sylvia Garcia mentioned? And does it actually go across the front of the house or just up onto the front of the lot?
The the solid, that's me, that one, one more time. The solid fence is gonna, is gonna be where the red wood fence is now.
Right, so not across?
That fence there is a standard about five footer. That's about a standard five footer. We're going up just a foot more, make the state, that estate look.
I see. And across the front of the house will be this wrought iron?
Will be, will be still, will still be a brick, a brick too, but only it will have, the gates will be wrought iron. It's gonna be right on the property line in the front, right?
I see. Okay. Thank you.
How does that compare to other fences in the area? Because I think?
We have several, several, several houses along there. The fence is all the way up on the property line, but they're wrought iron.
Does anybody else have a brick fence in the area?
Nobody, nobody has a brick. Nobody has a brick. Nobody has. This is first time for this. This is, this is the only unique property, where there's several being built down the street, but this is the unique one for this one.
So presumably, without the front and east setback variations, you would wind up just doing a wrought iron on the front and the side, I'm assuming?
Yes, yes, it would. It will be that way. Yes, I guess you would be saying, yes. I guess someone to make this house look like this, it would be, it would, it really would, this would really be a big help. We've come so far.
When you say come so far, you haven't actually?
People, you know, you talk about doing a nice house like this in the community that doesn't have as much money put into a home. So this is, we need the security. It's a good security mechanism as well.
Okay, yeah. Could you talk a little bit more about the need for the fence or why?
Well, security, what's the security? There was security on it. And that, that there'd be a foot. The six footer is what I see a lot of times, a similar model is home in North Shore. And they have a six footer. It's sort of a model of something I've seen before already.
And just, just to, obviously, the garage is still there, is already there.
No, we're gonna want to build a new garage, about to build a new garage across the back of the, across, I guess, the inside of the yard, across the rear of the, across the front of the rear home, all across.
And that hasn't started?
No, we're, we're waiting on this final. Which we just finished, got to the zoning and all of that to get this much house on the property.
Okay.
And then for the back house or the second house, it's already there. On these drawings, it says it's a new, new building. Are you making any additions or changes to that building or is that just because?
No, it's pretty much the same, pretty much where it is, yes.
Okay. And does the breezeway connect? How do you, are the two houses connected, the front and the back?
Yes, they connect to the front and back, right.
And that's what you do through the breezeway, through the garage, you connect the two buildings?
Yes, yes.
So if you, even without the new garage, the existing back building would need a variance for the east side, it looks like, because it's less than, what's the variance here? The so it's supposed to be six-point-eight-three on the east side, it looks like. So it looks like that existing building is already encroaching on the east.
Yes.
So there's like a two and a half foot setback there.
Got it. So if you didn't, if you didn't get the, if you didn't get the variance, that back building that's already existing would be an existing non-conforming building on the?
Yeah, yes. This that Ron, this that Ron Gardner architect, yes.
Got it.
And that's only on the east side variance, though?
Correct.
Is there any particular difference for for if your goal with the brick fence in the front on the west side is security, is there any particular reason you you couldn't do a four-foot brick fence?
It would that look good, would look good with the space, you know? You know, it just wouldn't, you wouldn't do it. Four foot be too low. He might just jump across it. That's that's a problem.
I didn't hear what Mr. Caldwell said.
I was, I was saying is that it just, it looks, it would look much better. The neighbors, the neighbors, it would look better for their homes as well, a nice finish.
Got it. And I've asked this probably ten times in different ways, and I'm just not absorbing the answer, but the 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 front building, not the garage, is relatively new, looks like?
That building is an older home.
Older home.
Because we faced, we faced it.
We faced it. And that was done with Ron Gardner?
Yes.
Okay, and that had received permits? Or is that part of?
Oh, oh, we, this, uh, Red Architects is taking care of all of that, in this.
Got it, and so for the rear building, that you're redoing, I guess you're doing, redoing the garage and then keeping that rear building, right?
Right, building the garage, the garage is not built yet.
Got it, building the garage.
The garage and breezeway is to be built, that's, that's when the newest set of choice.
Got it. And the buil, the building that's in the back then, you're keeping, or that's?
Oh, we're gonna keep that, yes, yes.
And you're just basically adding the garage in the middle?
Right, that's in the breezeway, exactly right.
Got it, and so the building, the back building is old, is that part of the Ron Gardner experience?
Yes, yeah, that was experienced, that was that crazy, man. He had said, he had some kind of deal with somebody over there at Forty Seventh Street, he must have been pushing homes through that, through that, that department over there, instead of going through the main city. He had me go down to a meeting and met, meet a guy, the guy came out and, and had to darn it, cuss him out, because he's trying to push it through over there. He could not push that through.
But, but when was that built?
This was built about, uh, about, about five, six years ago, maybe six years ago.
Back building?
Yes.
Okay, and was that then permitted correctly, or is there, is there some, some contesting going on with the city about?
Oh, no, no, we're, we're past that, we're past that, we've, we've been through the city through all that, we're fine with the city now, that one.
Got it, and meaning that the city is fine with you having, is, is part of that, part of the issue, and part of the reason for the garage is that you need to connect the two buildings?
Yes.
Permit, the issue is that you have two separate buildings on the lot?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and so you're solving that with the garage that connects them?
The breezeway is gonna solve it, yes.
Right, okay, and that again is tied up with your east side variation?
Yes.
And the front and west side are not relevant for that?
No.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the board?
Yep, I'm still, um, confused, so I guess I just maybe walk through my understanding, is the front, the variation for the front setback, and the west for fences, and the east for the garage, is that? What's happening?
The east is the garage and the brick fence. And the rear structure.
So, this is Sylvia, my, my understanding is the front is the, is the brick fence?
The front will be brick, bringing the front.
That's where your, that's where your variance is for the front, is the, is just the brick fence, that's what's called?
Yes, that's all, that's all, that's all, exactly right, yes.
On the east variance, it's the existing structure, the fence, and the new garage.
There you go, that's right.
And then on the west, it's the fence, the breezeway, and the garage. The front, garage and the breezeway are, are a couple feet off the property line, but the fence is right on the property line.
Yes.
You need a variance for all three of those on the west side.
Yes.
Okay.
So then just, let me, for the fifth time, the, you need the east setback, but also the west side variation for the garage and breezeway, to essentially connect the two buildings and resolve that issue?
Well, that's correct, although because of the fact that the fences is on the property line, they're calling out a zero side setback.
For the, uh?
For the, for the east, for the west and the east side, yes.
I'm trying to get to, you, you have, it sounds like a couple different issues going on, where you're trying to legalize the, the separate building by connecting the two, the old building in the back, like, the front through the garage. So I just want to make sure we are clear on which of the variations is necessary for that purpose. And if I understand you correctly, it is both the east and west, uh, side variations are required for that. And the front is, is only for the fence, the brick fence in the front that wraps around?
That's correct, so, Jim.
Now, huh, but just to clarify, how much of this is already built?
Just the rear home.
So, and, and the garage?
The front, and the front, and the front, no, no, the garage is not built, in the rear home.
Thank you.
The front home is built, the front home is built as well, that was the older home, the front one.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
So, to, to kind of walk through, like, it, so if, I think there's a couple of things that you're hearing folks kind of think about. So, if we were to say you can't do a, a brick fence, and you need to comply with the, the, the front variance, you would still need the variances for the existing structure and the, for the existing structure on the east side?
Yes.
And then to the chairman's point, you've got the garage and the breezeway to connect the two buildings, that, that then triggered the west side variance. Is there, what, what does it do to the structure if you did a smaller breezeway within the footprint, or a smaller garage, is there, does that impact your rate of return, or does, like, what, what hardship would that create for you to comply with?
Three foot would be about the minimum of the width of a breezeway could be, maneuver people back and forth through it, so that'd be about the standard size of what a sidewalk would be. So you couldn't get it too much narrow, or narrow than that, anyway.
Yeah, I've got it about four, it's like four feet, three inches.
Right, right, that's about minimum, right.
So if you couldn't build the garage, would you have to?
There'll be no garage.
Sorry?
There'll be, there'll be no real, there will be no garage for the whole house at all.
Well, I under, I get that, but, um, it sounded like you, you couldn't have two buildings on the lot, is that accurate?
No.
Without, without a connection, that's correct.
Without a connection, right, that was why we?
All right, so to go back to my question, if you did not build the garage, would you have to demolish the rear structure, or one of the structures?
No, you just have to continue the breezeway.
Okay.
It's not in the residential zoning, it's in a B, B two zoning now. The setback requirements would not only, if for commercial, would be somewhat different, that's what we found, and that they?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the implications if you didn't get the, the variance, so that's, I think what we're all trying to discuss out here.
You have a, a new architect presumably?
A red architect.
Red architect, and were they clearly not able to make the, uh, this hearing?
Uh, they were not aware that they have to attend. Because, uh, uh, Mr. Caldwell was more or less the, um, designer of it, as opposed to the, uh, uh, architects, they, they drew what, what he asked them to draw.
Got it. And so presumably, if, is it your understanding, let me back up a second, that you need, what I'm understanding of the case, you tell me if this is different, is that you need the garage that's connecting the front and back buildings? Because otherwise you are either being cited, or you have been cited, and you'll have an issue with the two separate buildings, is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, and you presumably could have the garage be smaller without the, uh, east side setback?
We could make a two car garage as opposed to a three car garage.
Okay. And the, the, are you, are you, does Mr. Caldwell live here, or this is, you're selling?
My home, yes.
Got it, and the, uh, impact on having a two car versus three car garage, in terms of the rate of return? What, what have you invested in this property, and what are you anticipating, if at some point you sell it, or for your own?
I never, would never sell this in my life, it's too much, I would never go this far into something like that, I'd never sell this, probably ever, it'd be my family forever.
Got it, and, um?
I'm building other homes along that way, along, along the waterway too, several homes that bring boaters along this, this has been a area that really, uh, at one time you had a lot of wealthy people used to long, you had houses with, 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 uh, docks in the back with garages for their boats. And, uh, so I have, I have a forty, forty-five foot carver, and so that's why it was sort of unique, to have boats come in on this, on the rear of this place. That was my first, I was purchasing it.
Yeah, Mr. Caldwell, are you living on this property right now?
Yes.
Okay.
You and your brother.
You and your brother, okay, I, I think let's, we'll take this under advisement, I think what I, what we will probably do is, um, ask you and your architect to sit down with the department, and let's just get, this feels very disorganized, and for your own sake, I am hesitant to put this up for a board vote, without everybody being exactly on the same page about, um, what is required, and just getting a little bit clearer, um, and seeing, it sounds like you're already living here, it sounds like you don't necessarily, um, you're not gonna lose some amount of money sitting somewhere if we, if we maybe push this until June fifth, tell me if that's, if I'm mistaken on that front.
No loss of money, but loss of time, since we originally had this, this date set for March, and we're now our way to, to where we are now.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, we get into the seasons, you know, and, uh, it's just a lot to be done, you know?
I'll, I'll, uh, I'll let you make that decision, I, our next meeting will be June fifth, we can continue to June fifth, and give you some time with your architect to sit down, or have a virtual meeting with the department, and just make sure, um, everything is organized, and it's very clear what you need to be or get in compliance. Um, and so that you can kind of come up with some alternatives, and flesh out the arguments about what the, uh, what the economic harm would be, or even sort of functional for however many family members you have living here, but what the harm would be, um, for your hardship, if you don't get anyone or any combination of these variations. Or if you, if you'd like, we can take it under advisement and vote on it today.
We're giving the consideration.
Okay. All right.
And I'm gonna continue this until June fifth, uh, we're gonna give no further notice, uh, and I would ask you just to reach out again, um, to the department, and, and we'll kind of work through them, and, and make sure we have all the materials we need, and then we'll come back to do this on the fifth.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, guys.
I would, sorry, before you guys go, just one, one more thing, I would add, separating out the fence from the other parts of the building, I think could be helpful in that discussion.
Say it again?
I think separating out the fence from the rest of the building, and that, having kind of those two different understandings could be helpful.
Oh, I see.
What do you think about this?
Just, just to echo that, so, what, what?
Reducing the height of the fence or something?
Yeah, I think, I think there, because I think there's a, to me, I'm speaking for myself, just kind of in this conversation, I think the question of what the fence looks like, and how it fits into the neighborhood is one issue, and then I think this, there's this larger, what's required to connect your two buildings, I think those are the two things that we're thinking about, and just, I think, if we were to approve one or the other, I think is partly what I've been trying to think about, and how that would work.
Yeah, look at it from, in those two buckets, one is for the front setback and the, the solid six foot brick fence, what is your argument for the hardship that it would create if you don't have that fence, what are some alternatives? And then separately, what is it you need to come into compliance with your two separate buildings, and if there's anything else going on that, that you need to do to become into compliance with any of the city's codes? Um, and figuring out what is that, what are the different ways to get there, and whether they require that both of these variations or not? And without the variations, what would the alternative look like, and how much would it cost, and what would that sort of do to impact your overall, uh, economic analysis of this project? Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, again, no further notice, we're gonna continue this one until June fifth.
Thank you.
At what time?
Uh, I won't give you a time, if you look for the, the agenda when we post it, uh, I think we're only doing one call. So I'll just be in one, presumably nine AM call, but just look for the agenda, and if anything is different, use that as your, as your guidepost.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. That is the remainder of our call, of our session. So I move that we convene in the closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meetings Act, for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in the open session. For those viewing by live stream, we will return from our closed session, and the live stream will continue at that point for voting on these matters. Commissioner Toya seconds, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, we are in closed session. Perfect. I move we return to open session, Commissioner Toya seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we're back in session, we will now vote. Note that any motion to approve especially use will be tied to the recommendations of the department, and any additional conditions read by me. I move to approve Board Calendar one twelve dash nineteen S, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia.
Yes.
Commissioner Saul.
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve Board Calendars one forty-seven and one, one forty-seven twenty S and one forty-eight twenty Z. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, those matters are approved. I move to approve Board Calendar one twenty-seven twenty S, as amended such that the applicant, the application is issued solely to Davken, D A V K E N LLC, Doing Business as Massage Envy. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved as amended, I move to approve one forty-six twenty S, Commissioner Toya seconds? Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve Board Calendars one twenty-three and one twenty-four twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, those matters are approved, I move to approve Board Calendars one twenty-five twenty Z and one twenty-six twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, those matters are approved, I move to approve Board Calendar one forty-three twenty S, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one twenty-eight twenty S, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one twenty-nine twenty S, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one thirty-five twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one forty-one twenty Z and one forty-two twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, those matters are approved, I move to one nineteen twenty Z and one twenty twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, those matters are approved, I move to approve one thirty-one twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one thirty-two twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one twenty-two twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one thirty twenty Z, Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
No.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one thirty- Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve one thirty-seven twenty Z, one thirty-eight twenty Z and one thirty-nine twenty S, Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, those matters are approved, I move to approve one forty-nine twenty S and one fifty twenty Z, Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, those matters are approved, I move to approve one forty twenty S, Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, moving on to the two o'clock call. I move to approve. Ninety twenty S with the condition that no liquor be sold while the drive-through is in operation, Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved with the condition as read. Uh, I move to approve twenty-six twenty Z, Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve sixty-five twenty Z, Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Saul?
No.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve eighteen twenty S, Commissioner Toyah seconds, Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Toyah?
Yes.
Commissioner Esposito?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, that matter is approved, I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board for board calendar numbers. Six eighteen nineteen Z, six nineteen nineteen Z, six twenty-six nineteen S, six twenty-seven nineteen Z, five thirty-six nineteen Z, six twenty S, ten twenty Z, forty-four twenty Z, forty-five twenty Z, forty-six twenty Z, sixty twenty Z, seventy-one twenty S, seventy-two twenty Z, seventy-seven twenty Z, eighty-two twenty S, eighty-three twenty Z, ninety-nine twenty Z, and one hundred twenty Z. Commissioner Toyah seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, that motion carries, I move to approve the, uh, I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its special meeting of March sixth, twenty twenty, Commissioner Toyah seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion is carried, I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its regular meeting of February twenty first, twenty twenty, Commissioner Toyah seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, that motion is carried, I move we adjourn the meeting, Commissioner Toyah seconds, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it and we are adjourned.
Thank you.